Good evening and welcome to the July 7, 2022, meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I am Commission Chair Daniel Weir. This is the second of two evenings scheduled for our public hearings. Tonight, the commission will hear a request for use permit for below grade parking structure at the Heights School, as well as corresponding field. Tonight, the commission will also hear a briefing on updates to administrative regulations and conduct other commission business such as committee reports, minutes, and bylaws issues. Last night, the commission heard a request to advertise future public hearings by the Planning Commission and County Board to consider actions pertaining to the Courthouse West Special General Land Use Plan Study. If you are here tonight for that item, informationally, you can catch up either on YouTube or on the county website. And your next opportunity to provide feedback will be at the county board meeting on July 16. Some additional items to share with you now for our safety and the safety of our staff and residents. We are holding this meeting virtually. Welcome to our commissioners, to county staff, applicants, and community members who are all joining us remotely. We are legally authorized to hold this virtual meeting based on the governor's executive orders, legislation adopted by the Virginia General Assembly and the county board's continuity of operations ordinance adopted on March 2020. Before we begin, a few specifics to orient everyone to our virtual environment. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast, Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, and the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. And if commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. I understand that the phone number is provided on the team's invite. And registered speakers have received Ms. Badger's telephone number in their speaker registration confirmation. For other speakers and presenters joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference and keep your cameras off until the clerk calls on you to speak. When called upon to speak, please unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that's located on your command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you have spoken, please turn your cameras off. And if you're dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's hearing was required, and we are not able to accommodate additional speakers. Public comment will take place within the same timeframes as we would provide at an in-person meeting. Speakers will have three minutes to comment as individuals and five minutes to speak if representing an organization. A speaking timer will be displayed on screen by the clerk. If you are dialing in by phone and unavailable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning when 30 seconds are remaining, and you will be muted when your time is concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. And lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Before I go to Ms. Badger for our agenda, I, for our first item, I want to share with my colleagues and those watching that we'll actually be taking our items a little bit out of order this evening. We will be beginning with commission business and, and then moving to the use permit plan. I think that we request, I think that we can dispose of the commission business quite promptly. And, and, and actually, this is another little bit of an audible. The, the main commission business that we're going to start with is the, is actions. So we'll do minutes and we will do amendments to our bylaws that will enable us to do, have remote participation. And that will, you know, so I'll kick it to the staff for that when we get to it. And then we'll come around for any reports at the end, after our informational item on, default site conditions. So, Madam Clerk, if you follow me on that, would you please call the first item?
Yes, the first item is the PC Committee, Committee Reports and Other Business, including the approval of the June 8th minutes.
Great, thank you. So the June 8th minutes, I believe, have been circulated. I recall seeing them. I hope I'm not making that up. A question for my colleagues before I entertain, before I seek unanimous consent for adoption of the June 8th minutes. Does anyone have any amendments or changes or corrections to the draft June 8th minutes as they were circulated last week? I am not seeing any hands. And so, and so I am going to seek unanimous consent to deem the minutes of our June 8th meeting adopted. Commissioner Patel?
Here we are. Just, I want to make sure that the record notes that I was not present at the June 8th meeting, so I would not be able to.
You, you would just not object. You would, yeah, it doesn't, it's not recorded as a vote, it's recorded as unanimous consent, yeah. You would not object, I mean. So, and, and that is how you were recorded as being absent. And so I think we're fine, hearing no objections, the minutes are adopted. I think that I want to actually, we'll move to this next item, which is our, our bylaws. As, as you all know, and I'm just going to say one quick thing and then, then get over to staff to, to sort of say anything that I've forgotten or neglected to or that needs to be said. We, in order to, we are not under, under the legislation that enables virtual meetings for public bodies, we are not able to meet virtually because we are the planning commission, we are explicitly exempted from doing so, accepted from doing so, excuse me. That said, upon adoption of, of, of appropriate policy, we do have the authority to meet, to, to allow for hybrid remote participation by planning commissioners. There are some limitations. For instance, you have to go on record as, 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 as your, as to your reason for participating virtually or participating remotely. There has to be, there, there are four, it has to, your reason has to fall into one of four authorized categories. And, and we as commissioners are only able to participate remotely in up to one quarter of our meetings. And we have to have a policy that enables us to do so. What staff have prepared and circulated is a policy that would, an amendment to our bylaws and, and policy that would allow for hybrid participation at our hearings. So this is our regular monthly commission hearings that we're talking about. There is still work to be done on how we go about allowing participation, remote participation in SPRC projects, in LRPC projects, SOCO projects, et cetera. And so if you are asking, well, Daniel, we meet a number of times per year that nobody knows because we don't know in January how many SPRC meetings you're there going to be. That is a very good question. The answer to that is that the relevant denominator for the purposes of the policies that we're going to be presented, that are going to be presented to us and that will be adopted tonight is, is the one that is just the 11 months' main hearings. For those following along. If there's anything I've omitted or that also needs to be said or for context, you know, Mr. Fuselli, Mr. Schreiber, Mr. Pfeiffer, Ms. Badger, or anyone else, I would, would welcome you to, to step in. I don't know if you were planning also on, on sharing the document, it's been circulated, but if, if you want to do that, either I can bring it up or you can. Mr. Pfeiffer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Weir. Just for the record, I'm Matt Pfeiffer with the Planning Division. Joanne, if you wouldn't mind promoting me to present her briefly. Yes, thank you, that way I can share my screen. So the only thing I wanted to add to what you said, Chairman Weir, is just that. So this, this electronic meeting policy is required by the new state law for all planning commissions to adopt. This is essentially, this is kind of a boilerplate policy that was created kind of for all county commissions, but tailored to the planning commission specifically. And it, it's just sort of mirrors what's in the state code. It talks about, you know, the reasons for requesting to participate remotely, how members will request from the chair to participate remotely, and then how that is recorded in the meeting minutes. And then it talks about procedural requirements. Essentially, the upshot here is that, you know, permission shall only be granted as long as there is a physical quorum of the planning commission in the room. There are mixed arrangements for the voice of the member who is participating remotely, which means that, you know, as long as you participate in teams, we're, we're doing what we're doing now, that should be fine. And then, you know, that this policy shall be applied to all members equally. So that's, that's sort of all I have. As I mentioned, this is just sort of a boilerplate policy that was created for all county commissions, but tailored for the planning commission specifically in this case. And then, as the chair mentioned, you know, we'll be revisiting in September the committees themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer. And so, am I, am I correct in recalling that the idea is that it is sufficient to adopt this policy that we do not in fact need to further, to go so far as to amend the bylaws to either incorporate it or to provide some kind of authority for having it? I've got the bylaws open and, you know, there's, I don't see anything read onto the, under the meetings article that would, you know, that, that specifically requires in person. So I just want to make sure that, that we're all on the same page, that the understanding is, is that adopting this policy is, would be within our authority under our bylaws as they, as they exist today, and it would take effect and be in effect for our September meeting. That, does that sound correct, Mr. Pfeiffer?
It, it does, yeah. That, that's my understanding from our, you know, numerous conversations with the county attorney's office on this subject.
Right, easier is always better. So, I think, Mr. Pfeiffer, that, that all we need to do is to move second and, and vote to adopt the policy, is that, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Questions or concerns, et cetera, from, from members of the commission? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt. In other words, I, I would ask that one of the commissioners move to adopt the, the policy.
Okay, I'll do it if you put it back up on the screen, at least the title. Mr. Pfeiffer, can you put that document up?
Sure, my apologies. Here you go.
Okay, I move that the Arlington County Planning Commission adopt the policy governing electronic participation in meetings the draft of 7/1/2022.
A second?
Thank you, Commissioner Lantelmi, on the motion, Commissioner Gieran on the second. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the motion? Then I will call the roll. Give me one moment. Commissioner Bagley is absent. Commissioner Kirin?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lantelmi?
Hi.
Commissioner Patel?
Hi.
Commissioner Peterson is absent. Commissioner Sarley?
Hi.
Excuse me, Commissioner Schroll is absent. Commissioner Steinberger is also absent. I vote I, and the motion carries six to zero. Thank you all, thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer. Thank you to everyone on staff who's been working on this. I know that this has been a big lift, and I know that there's a lot to go. We aim to be in a position to discuss the next steps, as Mr. Pfeiffer said in September. There's a little bit of work that's with Commissioner Patel and me, there's, there's, there's work that is with staff. And we will have more on this after the recess. That said, Madam Clerk, would you call the next item, please?
Sure, Chair. Did you want to do committee reports now or hold it until after the Heights?
Let's hold committee reports and, and staff reports on, until after the Heights, I think.
Okay, very good. So the next item on the agenda tonight is a use permit for Arlington Public Schools. A use permit amendment to allow below grade parking structure with a lighted rooftop for the Heights building. And we have Olivia Sontag from the Planning Division to present on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Sontag. And just Ms. Sontag, and I believe we have someone from APS here as well. Reminder that we've asked both the staff and the applicant to limit their presentations to 10 minutes. So Ms. Sontag before us.
All right, thank you, appreciate the reminder. We will keep this brief. So, good evening. My name is Olivia Sontag. I'm a planner in the CPHD Planning Division. This is a use permit amendment for the Heights Building, formerly the Wilson School. So you all have seen this presentation before, but I'll quickly go over the location again. The site is located on the corner of Wilson and Quinn Street. Here's the 711 building for reference. Phase one was completed in 2019, which is the main school building here. And then phase two is located here along North Quinn Street, and then the front, fronting 18th Street North. So with this application, APS proposes a use permit amendment to add a 61 space partially below grade parking garage. The APS design provides an identified need for staff, visitor, delivery, and ADA parking on site and under the control of APS. The garage also provides covered and secure storage for bikes, a covered and improved entrance to the Schreiber program and a synthetic lighted turf field above in accordance with the MOA with the county. APS also proposes a tilt to the field with an, with amphitheater seating on the northwest corner to accommodate the entrance to the parking garage in Schreiber Program. So the used permit application was heard by the Planning Commission in May, where the commission recommended deferral. The county board also heard the item in May and also recommended deferral to a date no earlier than the July 16, 2022 county board meeting, asking for additional time to assess and further address the issues identified in the report. So these issues included the 18th Street North width and parking lane, the 18th Street North street scape, 18th Street operations, and the field elevation. APS has agreed to incorporate the three 18th Street revisions, but will keep the field at an elevation of 180 feet. Staff supports all of the revisions to 18th Street and the APS conclusion that the field needs to be at an elevation of 180 feet so that the field and floor one of the school are level to accommodate the needs of students and maximizes the playable field area. So I'll briefly cover these changes that have been made to the proposal to address these issues since the last time you saw the proposal. And then APS will present in a little more detail on some of these changes. So the first item is the parking lane. APS has agreed to keep the existing parking lane at staff's recommendation and keep the overall width of 38 feet. With a revised street scape with the 15 feet, the street scape has also been revised to be consistent with the Western Rosalind area plan. The proposed street scape envisioned in the wrap includes parking lanes on both sides of the street, two and a half feet for light poles, a minimum 10-foot sidewalk, and optional width for planting. So the raised street scape width now includes a five-foot raised continuous planter with seven columnar-style trees and low shrubs planted throughout. The remaining 10 feet of clear sidewalk width is available for pedestrian movement and the boarding and the lighting for, for the buses. The light poles are also proposed to be relocated to the raised planter to minimize obstructions to the 10-foot clear path. And then there have also been two additional street trees planted on the corner of Quinn and 18th, and then on the opposite corner of the field, fronting 18th, just to offset some of the, the street tree requirements. So with the operations, staff worked with APS to craft a condition requiring an operations plan for 18th Street during the daily weekday closures. This is all outlined in condition number 67. APS has agreed to, you know, incorporate all of the 18th Street changes, but as stated, they have opted to keep the field at an elevation of 180 feet so that the, the field and Level One, which you can see on the screen here, are level. There's a zero, zero entrance, zero barrier entrance onto the field. And they've expressed this need to accommodate the needs of students, but also to maximize the playable field area and avoid any additional ramps and stairs that would be needed to gain access from Level One to the field. And then some of the additional improvements that I wanted to highlight again. Here, clouded are the two additional street trees that they've added as part of the design. There are four additional trees planted over here on the transition from the field to Rosalind Highlands Park. Again, you can see the entrance from Level One onto the field. They've also, we asked them, staff asked them to consider additional screening for the garage or decorative panels that would help with the, the height of the garage along 18th Street. And APS has proposed, shown here, these banners in colors along, along 18th Street. They've also widened the base of the stair on 18th Street leading up to the field. So the staff recommendation currently is to approve the use permit amendment for the garage with modifications to the zoning ordinance requirements for parking reduction and to allow parking spaces to be located off-site, which are in the Aubrey Parking Garage. And then subject to the conditions of the staff report, namely the new condition number 67. So just to briefly go over the previous community engagement process, this item did in May go to the PFRC and the Parks and Rec Commission. The chair of the PFRC did not think that these changes warranted going back to the PFRC, which is why it did not return. And the same, the same was said for the Parks and Rec Commission. Back in April, the Transportation Commission recommended deferral, Planning Commission recommended deferral, and the board recommended deferral. This item did go to the Transportation Commission this past Thursday, where they recommended approval. And then here we are tonight, and the county board meeting is scheduled for July 16. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sontag. Do we have someone from APS?
Good evening, Chairman Weir. This is Jeff Chambers, Director of Design and Construction with Arlington Public Schools.
Welcome, Mr. Chambers. Let me just reset my timer so that it doesn't go off at the exact moment that I've accidentally turned off mute. I've got 10 minutes. I'll, I'll start it as soon as you, as soon as you commence.
All right. See the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Some of the information that we have is consistent with, with what the staff report was showing. In summary, the Heights Phase Two was reviewed by various Arlington County Commissions, as noted previously, and ultimately deferred by the county board action in May. In the time since then, we have been completing design revisions to address these comments and working with staff as we, we made these changes, particularly around the street scape and facade treatment. The proposed field elevation does remain unchanged because it's a central component of providing acceptable and universal access from the building. And it also provides better security for the students during the school day in the sense that students don't have to move through the park to get to the field. And we have increased our security requirements for our students during the school day, and that was part of the, the reason for keeping the elevation where it was without having to reduce the size of the field. The materials from the May 2nd Planning Commission meeting illustrating the original proposal are included at the end of the presentation for reference by the commissioners, so that they have that information. Talking about the, the little bit more detail on the revised street scape, we did maintain the existing street width and parking lane adjacent to the APS frontage. We added the continuous elevated planning strip with trees and other plannings. We did reduce the sidewalk clear width to 10 feet from the original proposal. And we made a geometry change to the stair at the 18th Street access to the field. And we provided more additional detail on the finishes at the covered entrance on Level G1, as well as talking about what we're planning as far as facade treatments along 18th Street. And as also is recommended, we added the planning strip at North Quinn Street adjacent to the railing. So looking at the sketch, you can see the initial design on the bottom and the revised design on the top. And you can see the changes to the street scape, as well as the curb line and including the parking lane along the side of the street. And on the upper right-hand side of that upper design, you can see the widened staircase to 18th Street, both for public access and also for students accessing buses coming off of the field so that they can utilize the field for staging, waiting for buses, especially late buses, so they don't have to stack on the sidewalk due to the reduced width. As noted, the initial design, we did have a loading, an unloading area of seven foot eight with the tree pits in the middle, and then a wide walking street adjacent to the building. On the right-hand side, you can see the revision where we do have the planting strip or the the continuous planting bed for the columnar trees and the access for students to get on and off of the buses during loading and unloading times. Looking at the renderings, you can see on the left-hand side, the initial design with the, without the parking lane. On the right-hand side, you can see the parking lane and the banners that we're looking at trying to soften the the side. Talk a little bit more about that before or after, and you can see that the planting areas have been modified to show the the design as it as it's intended to be. I think in the earlier design, you can see we just had strip planting was, which was not what was, which is is less correct than what we have in the in the rendering on the right-hand side. As far as the finish, a lot of discussion was talked about with regard to the entrance to the Schreiber program. And again, it's a slope sidewalk that goes down to that main entrance, which is adjacent to the Schreiber administrative entrance. All of our buildings, all of the accesses or entrances are for all students. Anybody can go in to any of the entrances, so it's not necessarily specifically to the program. It's just where the administrative areas are for those programs. But we are looking at using a white mineral coating applied to the concrete wall and soffit above the covered entrance. There would be up-down lighting that would reflect off of the white surfaces to provide a bright light area for evening access. If anybody has seen the refinish, the refinished educational center, which is bright and white, that is a similar finish is what we're planning on putting in that entrance way to to brighten the entrance rather than being typical concrete. The rest of the facade, we are looking at at concrete of a similar finish and color of Roslin Highland Park to keep that consistent. And that was part of the intent of the design. As far as the banners go, we were thinking that this could be something that could have input from the students who could actually design the banners or be involved in the design of the banners. Just for representation, we just have showing rectangle banners hanging there, but they could be changeable with time. That could be showing art, could be showing different references that could be modified and changed over time, but the banners would would intend to be always there. And also in the planting strip, you can see that there would be not only the trees, but also some shrubbery and some other planting that we would include in that to soften the facade from the street. Looking down from above Quinn Street, you can see a rendering of all of the the changes that are made. You can see the buses in the parking area separated the buses a little bit more. The rendering is actually showing what would be at pickup time when the buses are generally staged in the parking area. The intent would be for the Schreiber buses to be closest to the curb because they load and unload from the side of the bus directly onto the curb. The then looking, standing at the Quinn Street, again, we would be controlling access from Quinn Street, the street being one-way. And we do have the student parking or bus bike parking also along the entry to that that Schreiber entrance, so that the students have some covered bike parking as well as the uncovered parking at certain areas on the site. And then this looking from the other direction, looking towards the west, looking at the field from above Eighteenth Street, and you can see Roslin Highland Park in the lower left, as well as the banners and and the buses. Looking down from street level, you can see the widened steps that go up to the field area. And again, students would be able to to stage on the field and and come down those steps to buses, so they didn't have to all stack on the sidewalk. And then looking from Roslin Highland Park towards the field, with that elevation, you can actually see onto the field from from the park itself and the connections for the public on non-school times. And then looking back towards the other direction, we do have additional, the additional exit above the Schreiber entrance off of the field. Working with ISD, we did have to add more egress to the field and to and from the field, mainly from the field during emergency access or exiting and from the original plan five years ago. And I believe that's the conclusion of the presentation of the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers this evening?
We do. We have one public speaker, Carmen Romero with APA, and I'll share my screen now.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Romero.
Thank you. My name is Carmen Romero, and I'm here, I'm the President and CEO at APA, the Arlington Partnership for Affordable Housing, and we are the developer and owner of Queens Court, which is directly across the street from the site. So I want to thank you and the commission for your outreach to invite me here tonight so I can get a little bit more context into the changes that were happening across the street, because I do think this is a very important area in the county. And I was actually a proud member of the original RAP's study group that worked on this back in, I don't even know what year that was, but with many of you. So, you know, I'm not here to comment on the changes. I know these have been a really, based on my read of the staff report, important negotiation between county staff and school staff to come to an agreement on something that staff support, so I'm really not here to comment on that. But it was it was good for me to understand the changes, but really to focus on ensuring that the residents of Queens Court are part of kind of future changes and conversations around the design of anything that's happening in the RAP's area and especially a site as critical as a school site across the street from us. And how do we do that and memorialize potentially in conditions and site plan language about outreach to both Queens Court and our residents? We've cut the ribbon on Queens Court a year ago, and I don't often get to come back to the Planning Commission and tell you who who ended up moving in. And just for information sharing, there's really, it's an incredibly vibrant community filled with one, two, and three bedrooms. It's two hundred and forty-nine households. And at move-in, we had a chance to sit down with one hundred and seventy-five of those families to learn a lot more about them and just to share some of that data back with with the commission. And and I'm glad Mr. Chambers is here from APS, because they even, you know, they include at least one family who I've gotten to know whose children go to HB, which is, or the Heights, I'm sorry. So out of those seventy, one hundred and seventy-five families, seventy-five percent identifies BIPOC residents. Fifty percent of households are women. Seventy-nine percent are engaged in APA programming already. You know, that can be everything. We've got programs and meetings and events. A hundred households have needed some help during the pandemic to pay rent because they've been negatively impacted in their, by either the pandemic or their work. And we really have a vibrant community with seventeen programs that we've launched since opening, everything from Girls on the Run teams to senior nights, partnership with Lacosteena VA, the one that's located in Gilliam Place, Project P, which is a menstruation education support group and free products for young women, Reading Rocks, summer camps, holiday magic. It's an incredible community that I think would be an asset to any planning that's going to be going on in the greater Western Roslin area planning, study area. And this is a work in process for all of us. I think we all struggle to make sure that we get renters' voices into public planning processes. And I'm guilty of it myself, you know, as we're designing our next building, taking the time to stop and ask our residents who live in our current properties, who are the experts of what it's like to live in an affordable housing development, what they like, what they don't like. So we're trying to do that ourselves internally, too. So I don't mean to to sound like we've got it all figured out. We certainly don't. We're doing charrettes now on future projects with current residents. We've started a resident council where we opened up solicitation to the entire portfolio of two thousand units to volunteer their time one Saturday a month with us to talk about things that are important to the resident council leadership. So we've got about, I think, fifteen people that meet together one Saturday a month. So I just wanted to share all that. Think about the opportunities. We're opening Twiliger Place up. We're getting Corin Shell the next week. When you do the site plan for the YMCA, perhaps someone from Twiliger Place can sit on the SPRC with you all. There's just a lot of growth, I think, for both of us and how we work together going forward. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Romero. Madam Clerk, do we have representatives from any commissions other than the Transportation Commission? Michelle, let me, I'll come to you in in the ordinary course.
No, we do not.
So Commissioner Lynn Toney, thank you, Ms. Badger.
Okay, yes. This was heard at last Thursday night's Transportation Commission meeting. As you mentioned earlier, when this originally came before the Transportation Commission, we voted to defer. This time, we instead voted in favor of it because for transportation purposes, there were sufficient changes that allowed the Transportation Commission to say that, you know, we we vote in favor of moving forward with this. Questions that were raised were as to why was the, why not change the field height that was discussed? We did we did nonetheless I guess, talk about our disappointment with the overall design and that it could not be lowered. This was seen as something that should have been forced when the school was originally being designed and that this really was a failure of of thinking all the way through all the aspects of the site when it was originally being built. We spent a lot of money and we hired very, very, very good architects, which came up with a stunning school. But we did not finish the job of planning it, so we end up with what we have here, which, again, the Transportation Commission was not thrilled with the design, but again, did feel that sufficient changes were made for the transportation aspects such that that it voted in favor of moving forward. And that's for the Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynn Toney. I will just, I will remind my colleagues then that we ordinarily would have a report from a subcommittee. In this case, this did not come to us, did not go through the PFRC process, as we've discussed prior to the last meeting or this one. And in any event, we are also absent independently. We are, we are missing Commissioner Stemberg and Commissioner Peterson. So there is not a PFRC Chair Report. I will then refer my colleagues as as the commission, as the discussion is now with the commission. I will refer my colleagues to the list of of potential topics that I circulated earlier. They are, there's a lot of words, so I am going to put them onto a Word file and then put that onto the screen. Give me just a moment to do so. So the topics that I think that we should begin with are field design size, character of neighborhood and community outreach, garage design and justification, the relationship of the proposal to several to two area to to the West Roslin area plan, the relationship with proposal to the Roslin sector plan, particularly recommendations concerning the Eighteenth Street corridor between Oak and Quinn, the relationship to the master transportation plan. I meant to add here, relationship to the GLUP. I had circulated a note about that in advance of this meeting as well, and then other items related to field height. Are there any other topics beyond these that commissioners would like to discuss this evening? Commissioner Guerin, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to walk through what the experience is currently like for students who are exiting a bus on Eighteenth and going into the school versus what will be different with this and which students are likely to use the changed space. So I don't know if you wanted to do that under garage design or if that's more of a clarifying question to cover in the beginning. Thank you.
Just adding that as a bullet here, any other topics from commissioners? I know that there is some overlap between these, so I apologize for that to the extent. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners with respect to the field design, size, and lighting? And I'm actually going to take this, I'm going to unshare this, because I'll just, I'll go through it as I listen to it. Commissioner Hughes.
Thanks, Commissioner. We're a question for staff, either APS or county staff. Does the rectangular field meet any size standards for rectangular fields that are utilized in competitive sports?
This is Olivia Sontek. It does not, but we do have Jeremy from Parks here as well to elaborate on that.
I guess, Jeremy Smith with DPR. The the field currently does not meet any standard. It was always intended to be a, mainly a practice field for ultimate frisbee. It's not long enough for ultimate frisbee. It's not quite wide enough. We would also use it for under ten soccer practices, small games for for young soccer people that don't need huge fields. But it currently wouldn't fit kind of with any garage size, no matter how big we made it, on the property, wouldn't fit an ultimate frisbee regulation field.
I'm not concerned about any ultimate, but you're saying it doesn't fit soccer, it doesn't fit football, doesn't fit field hockey. I mean, it it's fundamentally a green open space. It's usable, as you say, for for many things that are great, tenant-under soccer. You know, my little girl's soccer, she, I understand. But I, my question is, it is not a regulation of anything. It is an open green space, if I'm correct. Is that correct, Jeremy?
Yeah, I think it could be, it would meet a regulation under ten soccer field. There actually is a defined size for that, so, right.
That's good. And and but now to that question, Jeremy. So will will the size difference between at-grade, above-grade, or any of the proposals we have seen in any of the iterations from the original all the way to this one have any change to that fact?
From what I have seen, no. You know, if there were a reduction in the field size by, say, ten feet or something to get a ramping or stairs, it would still not meet, you know, regulation ultimate frisbee, but would still meet tenant-under soccer.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Weir.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Guerin. Commissioner Chambers, I see you've got your camera on. I'll come back to you after Commissioner Guerin. I may have a question before that as well.
Hi, I think this is probably also for Mr. Piven. What's the, and first, Jeremy, Jeremy, thank you so much for the work that you did on Jenny Dean Park. That came out beautifully. I'm sorry, I don't remember the specifics of where we left the field lighting issue, but how does this, how does this comply with what we think are best practices for lighting the field, given that we've had a lot of controversy over lighting fields in the past? Where does this fit in? Thank you.
We would use our same newer technology LED lights that have, you know, very narrow cutoffs, so they have a lot less spill into neighborhood than a lot of our old lights that would spill off. But this would meet where we've been going with new lighting technology, and we have a lot less complaints every time we have a newer field, so.
So a question that I have regarding the So a, a question that I have regarding the field designer, Commissioner Giren, are you, I'm sorry, are you finished? Okay. A question that I have respective to field design has to do, is, is, is oriented in the open space. Element of the West Roslyn Area Plan. One of the principles of the open space element for the, for the West Roslyn Area Plan being to ensure that park and school facilities provide. For organized active recreation as well as unprogrammed time for community usage, particularly for any open field space. And so my, I, I do not know to whom this question is directed, but what given, given that the. Existence of the field is effectively being. Covered up as opposed to being something that is. That, that the existence of the field that would be used for unprogrammed space is, is no longer advertising itself. But instead is, is above a ten-foot wall. What is being done? To. What is being, what has been put into writing in the use permit proposal to ensure? That members of the community are aware of the existence of, of the open field space and aware that it is. Available for unprogrammed community usage when it is not being used for. Structured programmed activities.
I'm not sure if I'm exactly the right person to answer this. Olivia might have more in the use permit, but we do have a memorandum of agreement. Already signed between the county and APS that governs sort of the, the use of the field and. When it would be used by the community and when it would be used by APS, but I don't know if that exactly answers your question of. What we would do to sort of advertise it other than the county would have the opportunity to program it. In after hours.
Right. I, I, I just want to observe. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Smith. I just want to observe that, that, you know, when, when you are walking down the street. This is maybe more for the benefit of my colleagues, but when, when one walking down the street and they see a field that they can see, right? The existence of the field and its ability to be used advertises itself. A field that is above my eye level and I am quite tall is not a field that any member of the community can be reasonably expected to know. Exists and can be used. So Ms. Sontag, I started down my, my comment before your camera came on. So my apologies for cutting you off. I'll, I'll, I'll yield the floor to you.
Oh, no worries. Um, I did want to mention, we did have discussions with DPR on signage. They said that's something that they would usually implement and Jeremy might have a little more information on this. They would usually implement after the field. Is constructed where signage seems appropriate. But we did not include that in the conditions or in the, this use permit amendment at this time. Jeremy, do you have any other information on signage that would be provided or that could be provided for this field?
Yeah, I don't think we've thought about that a lot, but we could certainly put sort of our typical park sign. You know, advertising it, advertising rules and things like that, which make it feel more like a public park. You know, if it had the, the same name as the rest of the park, that would certainly go a long way to. For people seeing the sign at least to understand that it is public.
And, and pointing out the accessible entrance to the park on the Highlands Park side would also be important.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Ms. Sontag. Commissioner Hughes, your hand is back up.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner Weir. A question for staff. Will the entrances both be accessible and the stairs be gated?
Jeremy.
Yes, so this is possibly even more for APS, but the whole field will be gated. But. Two of the three entrances to Rosen Hall and Park will be accessible. So the southernmost one will be pretty much at grade. That will be our main entrance for getting. Vehicles in to do maintenance, which the county will be doing maintenance on this field. And then the, the middle entrance is, will have stairs, but it will also have a ramp system. So the two will be accessible, but both will also need to be gated.
And Jeff, would you mind adding anything about when the gates will be closed or locked?
Sure, I, I can add that information. Essentially during school hours, the, the gates would be, be secure. But at all other times, the gates will not be secure until probably nighttime. They, they'll probably be an automatic lock system. To lock those gates, but you know, you can always get off the field. But the, the field is very visible from Roslyn Highland Park as per the one rendering that we, that we did show from the, the basketball court. So, I mean, we, we do, again, it's a back to, to the issue of, of security and keeping it secure. The other thing is. At one point in time, we talked about not having fence on the Roslyn Highland Park side, but for security reasons, we need it. And also it's there for, for balls to keep balls from, from coming out of the field into the Roslyn Highland Park.
Is there any other precedent, Mr. Chambers, in the county we would be able to see and utilize with an automatic gate like that that APS currently has?
We do actually.
Hi, I'm Richard Daniel Weir. Please leave me your name, number and a brief message and I'll return your call with some other cable. Thanks.
I love teams.
I, I, I don't believe we, we typically lock most of our, our fields and our gates. One of the, the concerns that we have here is, is vagrancy at, at nighttime. That is one of the reasons that we have it there. The other thing is, is we do have problems at some of our other schools where. Residents come into the field while students are, are doing physical education and, and those kinds of things, which we want to discourage.
And discouraging, discouraging and locking are two different things, Mr. Chambers. As I, I know you're aware of my loathing for APS's locks on gates.
My, my apologies. I, I want to, my apologies for the issue with, with the dial in. I, I, I. If I was trying to switch my audio because I'm having audio issues again, we'll deal with it, I guess. My apologies for that voicemail to my colleagues and. Sorry to interrupt.
It's fine, Commissioner Weir. And Commissioner Weir, I do want to just add on to your point. Literally. We are attempting now to reverse our elevated park and private public open space in Crystal City. And to an extent in Roslyn in both of our adopted plans. In lowering the public spaces down to the street level for activation utilization, because across all of Crystal City. We have tons of parks that were originally created through private easements in the developments that completely are underutilized. Because they're completely unknown. They're set away from the public realm. So I want to just further amplify what you said, Commissioner Weir, for my colleagues' sake and for the purposes of the record. Thank you, Commissioner Weir.
Daniel, I think you're muted.
I, uh, sorry, I want to share something as well, Commissioner Hughes, on this point. That, um, I, I, you know, I, I guess actually I'm going to phrase this as a question. Because thi- this is a, from, this is also from the West Roslyn Area Plan that calls for, just to, to remind people. Roslyn Highlands Park is a park that exists in two places. It has a playground that is on the Queen's Court site that is. That is publicly accessible when it is not being programmed for Queen's Court. And that playground is part of Roslyn Highlands Park. A fundamentally important component of the West Roslyn Area Plan. Would be that the field would not break, would actually interact and integrate between the two halves of Roslyn Highlands Park. And so I, I want to, I want to press on something, Mr. Chambers, I think that you said, which was that there would be signage from the. Basketball field or basketball court part of Roslyn Highlands Park. But I, I, I want to know what is being done, what is in writing in the proposed use permit or other applicable controlling documents. To make sure that, that the visual connectivity between the two components of Roslyn Highlands Park. Is somehow that the loss of the visual connectivity between the two components of Roslyn Highlands Park is not, is mitigated. And that the field is also signed from the direction of the playground. So I, Mr. Chambers, perhaps that's a question to you. I'm going to take the, the, the display down.
I think if you, if you look at the, the rendering from. Rendering of slide fifteen from the presentation that I just presented, you can see the field from Roslyn Highland Park. Being visible from the.
Can we get that up? Can we get that pulled up? Because I believe that that's an aerial rendering and I want to make sure that that's a, that that's not a great, if that's a.
Yeah, what, what, what's the height of the perspective of the rendering?
Uh, a standing height?
No, Dan, Commissioner Weir is asking about the view from the playground.
Yeah, this is, this is the wrong, this is the wrong perspective. This is, this is, yeah.
Yeah, I was making the point that it, it is visible from the.
But I do not see the playground here. I don't see the playground and, and I, and I, and so that was one of, that answers one of the questions. The other question was from the playground, how do I see the other part of, of Roslyn Highlands Park? And what, what is being done to advertise the usability of the, of the hundred and eighty-foot elevated field?
Yeah, from the crosswalk, we have this, the steps that go up to the, to the field. That's, that's what we have available at this point.
I believe though that, that the, that the playground is to my right. If I'm, if this is me looking at this, the playground is what seventy-five to a hundred and fifty feet to my right?
Jeff, slide twelve might help a little bit more. It's not exactly it, but.
Yeah, that's the view you would have, right? Slide twelve was right. The one you just had, Mr. Chambers, yes. Commissioner Weir, this, the playground is immediately on your left.
That answers my question.
Playground is immediately on your left right from here.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, did you, you have your hand back up again?
I'll drop it down, sorry.
Okay. And I'm, I'm going to, going forward, be a little bit more disciplined myself about keeping this in the categories because I could have raised these probably better under the, the. West Roslyn Area Plan portion. Are there any other questions on field design size and lighting? Going to move on to questions about, well, actually, Mr. Chambers, my apologies. I had promised you earlier that I would recognize you when your camera came on. Are there, I, I assume that there are other points that you had wanted to make.
Yeah, I was just going to make with regard to the field. The field is, is, is sized to be used for physical education and for the PE programs for the school. They would be using the rectangle field for, for multiple phys ed, whether it be soccer or, or what other, other. Uses that they would have for outdoor, outdoor space. But it, it is sized and appropriate for that and they, we used to have in the original plan, it was a sloped grass corner that was the turn up. And we have modified that to be steps that can be utilized, you know, for people to sit to watch. For instruction of students and they could also utilize those, those flat areas of, as part of their physical education program.
That's this corner that we're looking at right here that, that was sloped and is now steps? Okay. All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to extent and character of neighborhood and community outreach. Including lighting, effective field on, effective field height on the park, effective field height on Eighteenth Street residents. A question that I have, and I, I apologize again, I don't know who this is properly directed to. The staff report said that outreach was made to the civic associations and that outreach was made to the condominiums. What the staff report did not say, and please accept, accept my apologies if I'm incorrect in my reading, but it did not say that any outreach was made to Queen's Court. Is that, wa- was that in fact an omission in outreach and, and, and how, if so, what, what happened?
I apologize if that was not included in the staff report, but yes, we did reach out to the APA staff contact that was listed on the website.
Okay.
Your response.
Okay. And so Ms. Sontag, that, that you may have just answered my next question, which is that the outreach is, you're, you're sending emails to the contacts on file. That's. That's, that's. I mean, that's, that's the normal proto, that's the normal procedure, right? Like the, am I correct on both? Or is I right about both of those things?
Yes, we do our best to collect all the contact information that's available. I used the information that was available on the APA website and contacted them, I believe. Three different times and did not hear a response.
Okay, okay. Well, that, that's helpful. I appreciate that. Uh, and I note that other, I note that, you know, that I, I note that other organizations. That I would have expected to respond also didn't respond like, like Ray Farm. You can always count on Ray Farm to get a response. So, uh, thank you for, for helping, helping me understand that. I, I was also curious. I was curious both with respect to Queen's Court. And respect to just a reminder or refresher of, of what the ordinary protocol is. Sorry, got a little ahead of myself. Other questions about extent and character of neighborhood outreach? So, uh, moving on to what I've described as garage design. Let's do garage justification. Let's, let's do this garage justification and, and broader questions about. Need for students and, and school operation. Commissioner Giren.
My question is, is a little bit different, um, Chair Weir, but it is. Uh, understanding the difference with the access now. Is the switchback still at the end of the field is one question I have. And I'd like to just sort of be walked through what it looks like to use the new entrance. If you don't mind, it seems like this is where it fits, even though it's a. Little bit different from what you just identified.
I, that, I had told you that we would include it under that and so it's, it's my, it's my omission to have, it's, it's my omission. This is, let's, yep.
No worries. So I guess the first question is, is the switchback still there? And then the second is. If there's a way to like walk through what that looks like for someone who would use the new entrance.
Mr. Chambers, is, is that you or is that someone else?
I, I, I guess I, I guess on the rendering that I assume you can still see the switchback is still up to the center entrance. We also have this, the straight sidewalk entrance adjacent to the building. So there are two accessible entrances directly from Roslyn Highland Park.
Excellent. And then can someone walk me through what it would look like? Because if I understand this right, one of the big reasons we're considering this. Is to provide some additional access for students with disabilities or mobility issues. And they would be using this underground entrance. So what does that look like? For someone who would be using it?
So to get to the building, is that what you're, you're like from, from the buses?
Yeah, because right now all we're seeing is what it looks like from the outside, but if this is the daily experience of a student, I want a sense of what that looks like. I'm particularly concerned that the students in the Shriver Program are, you know, have the same options as everyone else. And that this isn't sort of a back entrance.
No, I, I, I don't believe, I mean.
So what help if you would show me what that looks like?
So from, from the buses, the students would go down the sidewalk and down another sidewalk into the building. And that's what we were talking about with this bright, wide open entrance. It's actually just a sloped sidewalk. It, it's not a handicap ramp. It is just a sidewalk that slopes to the building. It's about five to six feet above the entrance. The entrance door themselves that, that students can, can walk in and out directly of the building. There is no obstructions or whatnot. It's free air. It's, it's actually an exit from the building. Once you get into that sidewalk and then we have the additional spaces for, or bike racks that, that students can park their bikes in a. Under a covered area.
This is helpful and permit me, Chair Weir, if you don't mind, because I'm just, I feel like this is the big part of this discussion. So right now the students would be using the switchback or the stairs on the other end. Is that correct?
Yeah, students would actually come right out of the, the, the main level of the building. Could come directly onto the field, straight off out of the building. The, the Shriver Program is actually on this floor and the floor below is where their main classrooms are.
So how do, how do they get in and out right now, those children?
Right now, uh, for them, they, they go in, we have actually a temporary walkway. If, if you've been to the building between Roslyn Highland Park and, and the current grass field. There's a, a covered construction type walkway where they go get unloaded off of the buses and then they walk up here. They come up the sidewalk. They come up the sidewalk and they go into this entrance door. And then they have to go down to, uh, these classrooms, or they go down an elevator that's at this location that's specific for the, the Schreiber program.
Okay, and just, um, I appreciate your patience, Mr. Chambers. If this design did not get approved, is there any other way to make this bright sunny airy access into the building on, um, on the side that we're looking at? And I've just, I'm, I'm a little disoriented on the streets. I know that this is Queens Court down to the lower left of the, of the screen, but just, you is there, is there another way to do it? I mean, we'd lose, or is the issue that we'd lose some space on the field? We'd lose some footage on this field that's not regulation anyway?
Uh, yeah, we, we would, we would basically have to, what was, the original design was actually stairs, uh, only to the field. At the end of the current walkway, which they actually are there right now, uh, on the, on the existing condition. Uh, and they have the, um, students, um, do not have direct access to the grass field at this point in time. The students have to come up the switchback ramp, uh, from the ground level rather than the, uh, main level of the building. Uh, they go up the switchback ramp, go down Quinn Street and, and go back up 18th Street to get to the field. And actually, they don't really have access there because it's, there, there's no ramp or anything for them. Uh, the original design, uh, that was done, uh, with the, five years ago, with the, the plan that was presented, uh, at the use permit, was for students to come out of the building. And if you're ambulatory, you could go down steps and be directly on the field. And if you were not ambulatory, you would go down this sidewalk, the whole way into Roslyn Island Park. You would come through the park itself, and then you have to come back into the field that way, which would be basically discriminating against some of our students. Because they would have to take a circuitous route to get there, which does not work with the American Disability Act. Uh, and also, uh, APS is, is very concerned and working with universal design for all of our students. And we don't want to knowingly discriminate against any of our students. Every, if a student, one student can do it, all students should be able to do it. And that's the way we try to look at all of our facilities now.
I, I really appreciate that. And I do remember these discussions from when we considered this several years ago. I was on that PFRC. And I, I remember these issues came up then. We wanted to make sure that there was suitable access for all the students who would be dropped off, including the students who might have a mobility impairment, or if they needed a parent to walk them in. So I guess I'm still concerned that you're gonna have more than one entrance in, and is one going to be for the more able-bodied students and the other will be for the Schreiber students?
The way it works now from, from level one of the building, all students can exit the building directly onto the field.
Um, if a student's in a wheelchair, can they make it through the field that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Sir, Mr. Chambers, Commissioner Hughes, I'm gonna jump in because this is a directly, um, a follow-up on, uh, to some of Commissioner Gearing's questions. Mr. Chambers, do you, off the top of your head, do you know the square footage of, um, the, this is, it's technically, I'm leading to a point, uh, but it's, I, I, I don't think it's a leading question in the pejorative sense. Do you know the square footage of, of the field in its current form, roughly even?
No, I, I don't off the top of my head.
Okay. Um, because I, I guess the, the, I'm trying to get a denominator, right? My, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, what I'm, what I'm asking about, what I'm curious about is, is the the, if I remember right, uh, it's, it's a one inch to, to, to one foot incline, if you're gonna do a ramp, right? Um, and so we've got a, it, it from, uh, at 175 feet, we would be talking about a 60-foot long incline, assuming it's, you know, 12 feet wide, that's 750 square feet, right? Which I'm guessing is at most 1% to 2% of the size of the field. And given that the field is presently not able, is presently not sized for, going back to Commissioner Hughes's earlier questions, given that it's presently not of sufficient size for any regulation sport. I guess what I, what I want to understand is why the policy decision to, um, to to raise the field and a- asking the community to abandon many of the principles articulated in the various planning documents for something that doesn't actually materially remove, that, that, for something that would not bring us from a field that is regulation size for anything to not being regulation size. I, I hope the question is clear. I'm sorry if it's not.
No, I, I, we, we did look at it. We studied it. Uh, we looked at options and how we would do that. And essentially, we would eliminate the stairs and we would put in a ramp. Uh, the width, the 10-foot width that we have for the current sidewalk, which it, uh, goes towards Roslyn Highland Park, would have to remain because there are three major exits off of this building. And with regard to egress, you have to be able to go directly to a public way. Uh, so they would have to, you can't just go out into the field. Uh, you would actually have that, and then you would add a ramp to the side of that. Uh, we would probably make it a 10-foot wide ramp. Uh, and you, you're correct on the slope portion, but you can only go 32 inches and then you have to provide a landing. So it's, it's, it's significantly larger. Um, and then you end up, uh, having the issues of the alternative means of egress that ISD is requiring us to put into the field, and they have to be remote, and we would be too low for the entrances where the stairs are onto Quinn Street. Uh, they don't work there. Uh, we would probably end up creating a ramp, uh, or steps that would go to 18th Street uh, at the foot of the, the sloped, uh, area there, and we would lose additional space for that. So it, the field really becomes, uh, significantly smaller, and it would be, uh, infringing on the size that's required for the multiple PE classes that would have to happen there during the school day.
That, that thinking is helpful. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hughes?
Oh, it's great. I'm glad to know that the size of this field, which is bigger than the one provided for three times the number of students at Career Center, is, is insufficient for the PE education. I'll remember that one. Here's the question I have, Mr. Chambers. You said that the school, in your questions with Commissioner Gearing, that the school field is at the level one, correct? Chambers, I think you're on mute. I saw your mouth, I saw you.
I said correct.
Oh, sorry. I think it's, I think it's my headset, Mr. Chambers. Sorry, sorry. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chambers, the Schreiber program classrooms, are they on level one?
Some of the classrooms are on level one, and some of the classrooms are on G1, uh, which is the level below, and they actually pretty much directly, I don't know if you can see the arrow that, that I have up here, but it directly in this corridor is an elevator that goes up and down between the main classrooms of the Schreiber program that was installed for the, the Schreiber program to move vertically up to level one. Uh, level one is also where the cafeteria entrance is.
Yeah, no.
Share a screen again.
Yeah, you should share a screen, Jeff. As I, and I, I remember, Jeff, five years ago, this whole, this whole process, all those times ago.
You can't see the screen? Sorry.
No, not at the moment. There, it's coming up, looks like.
I'm sorry. So anyhow, directly in here, in this corridor, there's an elevator that goes up and down between the G1 and the L1.
All right. And G1 is the new entrance we're trying to create with the, uh, perpendicular, uh, ramp to 18th Street, correct?
Correct.
And the area, uh, Mr. Chambers, if you have that cursor out, the area above that line, if you don't mind, uh, where the wall is, uh, so you have a wall, you have a covered parapet, and then you have a walkway that's covered. Uh, that entire area above it, that field, that's a sloping portion of it, correct?
That is correct.
That's the area you've inserted steps now for instructional purposes, not for the field.
Correct.
Uh, Commissioner Gearing's question was quite actually, uh, I don't think really answered. And her question was, see that wall again in that line? If the area on the field was lowered to the street level, could you separately construct that particularly nice-looking covered entrance? The wall and the parapet? And could we get an answer to that question?
I, I, um, what you're saying is if the field was lowered, uh, five feet, would we have an issue? Would we have, we basically would have to build a separate covered walkway.
Correct. But, but the walkway we see visually is capable of being constructed by a general architect and engineer to meet the G1 level with or without the field behind it, correct?
Without the field over it, correct.
Okay. That is the extent of, oh, and just a reminder, so the entrance to the Schreiber program, or I'm sorry, I'm terrible with the names on them. They change too much. It is on this ramp, and that takes us down to G1 level. And the at-grade entrance, if I'm correct, is the level one entrance, and there's a elevator that connects the two. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. I appreciate it. Oh, and I would love to know the required standards for outdoor activity space for PE classes, um, given future projects coming down the line.
Sure, that's actually developed by our, our academics department and the, and the PE directors. So.
Is it, is it site-specific or is it universal?
Uh, it's generally site-specific for special programs such as, as, as the Career Center, as for this program, and, uh, the, uh, field was sized with regard to the outdoor PE classes that they would be doing at, at the Career Center that we're looking at, uh, as well as this, this facility.
I'm glad to know that it varies based on where it is. Thanks, Mr. Chambers.
Commissioner Sari.
Thank you, Chair Weir. Um, I'm going back to that ramp conversation, and, um, I noticed that on the drawing set, on, let me see if I can look up the sheet. GG, as in, you know, um, what's the word for G? 0112, so the proposed site plan, phase two. Um, it seems like the ramp goes from 175 to 179.34, and then you sort of meander up to 180 through the field. And the ramp there looks to be like, um, a single landing. You know, probably, I'm guessing, it's probably like eight feet wide or, so it seems really doable and really simple. And you, you can, you know, I can imagine a, a fairly, um, you know, accommodating design along the side of the building per the original design that would accommodate that ramp. Am I missing something on that ramp? Because it seems to be completely, um, serving the purpose of the, um, you know, non-segregating approach, where there's the stair right next to the ramp, which we could probably just eliminate the stairs and just do a single ramp, but that's a different design idea. Um, so I guess I'm a little skeptical that, you know, we can't find the same solution at, at the location next to the building, next to the exit door. And it doesn't seem to be that big of a deal, or, you know, if this civil engineering drawing is correct.
Again, we, we studied it multiple ways. Uh, the, adjacent to the building is actually a sidewalk. It's not a ramp. Uh, it doesn't have handrails. It doesn't, it doesn't require them because it's, it's not, uh, 1 and 12. It's actually a, a lessons 1 and 20, I believe. So it's just a sidewalk.
I'm sorry, but next to the building, are you talking about? I, I'm referring to the ramp that is, uh, between the, the, um, uh, Highlands Park and the, the field, where, and with the main stairs, which I'm guessing that's where all the students come in once they get off the bus? That's the main entrance to the school, essentially. Is that correct?
I'm not following you. I'm sorry.
So I'm on the plan. Let's see, I'm on the, probably the north side. I'm zoomed in way too, so I can't. Um, on the, on the east side, essentially where we go from the 175 to the field level, which would be the 180. So that, my point being, you have to transition that vertical, you know, all change somewhere, right? So if it's here on the corner, or if the field goes back to the lower thing, and then this transition goes to where the original design was uh, at the rear of the building, it's, it's doable, is what I'm trying to say. Or I'm trying to ask.
Ben, I see Ben's here. Do you, do you, do you understand the question, Ben?
Yes, I, I believe so. So, um, just a point of clarification. Uh, this render is actually a good, a good one to illustrate the point. So, the statement, I believe what I heard is, is that, uh, you're, you're asking how do students approach and get into the facility? So, uh, in, um, we, we have, uh, most of the students, uh, for example, for the HB Woodlawn program, would be coming along through Roslyn Highlands Park, uh, in between the bass, the multi-use court in our, in our elevated field. And then going up to the corner of the building where it's, it's an at-grade entrance there. So the, the, there's a slope from 18th Street. Uh, it goes up as you go south. So our student population does not take the switchback ramp or the stairs, go onto the field and then into, to the facility. Instead, they, they travel through Roslyn Highlands Park to get up to, to the building itself, where there are several, um, at-grade entrances that they could, could pick from at that, at that point.
Understood. And, and yes, I, I'm aware of that. But I think I'm addressing what Commissioner, uh, Weir was mentioning earlier on, in relationship to the field accessing, you know, the park or leaving the field and entering the field, and then the connection to the field, from the field to the building, which would be at the rear. And, you know, um, what I'm saying is this ramp, it doesn't seem to impose a large square footage, um, tax, if you will, on the field. And, you know, even with the slope sidewalk approach of 1 and 20, which I, I, you know, would urge us to look at that as an option. You could transition from the building to the field in an elegant way that is inclusive. And in other words, that you're not segregating. You could even get rid of the stairs, right? Which I'm always sort of advocating. And I, I, I commend APS for following that agenda. But essentially near the building, if the field were at the lower elevation. And my point is that you have to transition that vertical ground no matter what, right? Whether it's here on the side or next to the building or wherever else. Um, and, and so I think it's, it's a little bit sort of, you know, choose your, choose your poison, as it were. But we're gonna have to do that ramp and the stairs no matter what, is sort of the point I'm trying to, to highlight.
In the original design, grade level entrance to the field was right here in the center. So students exiting the building to get to the field, the way it was designed was there were steps over here that went down to the field. Here, this has to be level because this is an egress. This is an egress. This is an egress. So this remains flat. The slope can't start till here. And then you slope down, and then we used Roslyn Highland Park as, as part of the slope to get down to the field level. So if you would leave this, if you'd lower the field, we end up having to build another ramp here, which reduces the width of the field. Because we would, we, we don't want the students to be going outside of this, the, the, the school is responsible for the students once they're in their care. And they have to maintain that, that, that care of those students and keeping them safe. And it's, it, it's, it's more, more in tune today than it, than it's ever been. With regard to that, and, and, you know, our, our security, uh, folks, you know, want to make sure that, that we are responsible for the kids. Yes, the, the, the Schreiber, or the HB students can leave campus and go to lunch and come back, but they come in and out of secure entrances.
Sure. And I, I totally agree with that. And I'm, I, I just, I, I adamantly believe that there is a design solution, should the field stay at the 175 level, that would accommodate all the concerns that you just stated, um, plus, you know, do something that's elegant and, you know, and, and I said the original design, but you're right, you know, we probably need to revisit that a little bit more detail. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Going to then, thank you, Commissioner Lee. Uh, Sari going to, um, Commissioner Gear and Commissioner Hughes, I see you still have your hand up. I don't know if that's a, just a digital or not, uh, but I, um, okay, going to Commissioner Gear.
Thank you, Chair Weir. So I, I, I guess I'm kind of confused about this. How, how do the students access the field right now? Mr. Chambers?
I, I can start to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can start to address that. So, um, currently, you know, things at the side are, are very much a temporary condition.
So how do they access the field?
There, there is no accessible entrance to the field now. Uh, there, there's, uh, there's steps to traverse it down, um, to get, uh, to get onto the field. If you're a non-ambulatory person, you would have to exit the facility, make your way through Roslyn Highlands Park, and then e- enter the field from, uh, from 18th Street.
Is that what Ms. Sontag is showing on the, on the screen? An access from 18th Street?
No, she, the, the view right here is from Roslyn Highlands Park. Uh, and, and there's an opening in the benches that will eventually Uh, and, and there's an opening in the benches that will eventually permit access onto the field. Uh, but currently you see the, uh, temporary construction scaffolding that, that Mr. Chambers mentioned earlier, providing a covered, a temporary covered entrance into our facility. So that really you, you cannot enter the field from this location. Um, there's, there's a barrier of the scaffolding itself. Uh, so you would have to continue your way north down to Eighteenth Street.
Mr. Mr. Bergen, I think that our, I think that our line of inquiry is that you are showing us. You are, you have just shown us how you could access the field excessively at this level, right? Like the space between that temporary covered walkway and the entrance to Virginia Highlands Park, like. You're making the point that Commissioner Sari made that you already have to negotiate that and you could even do that behind the existing benches. And what we don't understand is if this is the justification for a hundred and eighty feet. I understand that, that there are other just, there are other points that y'all are making, but if this is the justification for a hundred and eighty feet, we don't under. Uh, we don't understand. We don't understand it. We don't understand it.
Yeah, part of, part of our struggle is a, is a communication one. Um, the conversation early, certainly there's a design solution to put the field at one seventy-five. Uh, and we reviewed those design solutions with our, with our senior leadership and our, and our board. And they, um, did not agree that that was adequate as far as getting universal, the universal, you know, sorry, universal and then adequate access for our students to the field. And so they've, they've asked us to proceed with the, the elevation as proposed. And that's what, what our stat, and that's what we're doing now here this evening.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that. And I understand what you were saying about being responsible for the students, albeit HB students are allowed off campus. And I would assume that the fencing around the elevated field would provide some of that security, but I'm still really puzzled by this as a solution. So, you know, to clarify our roles here, on planning commission, our job is to look at what is best for the community as a whole. This seems like a very expensive solution. Um, definitely very elegant. It is lovely, but I, I, you know, I really wonder if this, you know, we raised these issues five years ago. Did we, did we somehow miss this? How the field was going to be accessible for the students? Now we have to raise it to a level to make it accessible. And if that's the case, uh, you know, I really, I'd want to know more about the issues Commissioner Sari raised about the access points through the, through the park on the east side. Um, you know, that's not going to be universal design to have stairs and a ramp. So some students will still be using the ramp while others are using the stairs. It, it won't feel equal to those. So I guess I just want to register my, my confusion over why we're exploring such an expensive solution to this problem. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gear and, uh, Commissioner Hughes. I, I, I would like if we can to move on to, to wrap. Yeah.
I, I just wanted to, uh, Mr. Bergen just mentioned in his comments, and I just wanted to say, uh, it appears that there was studies done to produce, uh, demonstrations of how the field condition at street level or an improved version of what Ms. Sontag has in front of us, which seems rather pleasant to me, if not cleaned up after our construction max. Um, we're prepared, uh, is either Mr. Chambers or Mr. Bergen willing to share those with us this evening? Any visuals? Even though they were not included in our reports?
So, so I, um, I guess I'll start the, you know, one, one point of clarification I want to make from the image that was just on the screen. Um, the field currently is sloped. It is not a flat field. It kind of, it, it, there's a very, you know, steep hill at the building and then it gently slopes all the way down to Eighteenth Street. So the, uh, the view wouldn't necessarily capture.
I've, I've been to the site. I've been, I've been to the site, Mr. Bergen, since you've been there. So I, I'm aware of the, the, the current, uh, you know, in situ positions.
All right, just for the, for the benefit of the other commissioners and, uh, Commissioner Hughes. Um, I, I don't have the material available at this time for the, for the, um, for the visuals. It, it was a, uh, Mr. Chambers described it, what we had, um, had proposed is to, is to insert a, a sloped walkway, uh, reducing the north-south dimension of the field. Um, and, and making that elevation change within the existing space of the proposed field itself.
And, and I think the other issue was, is the additional egress required by ISD that wasn't envisioned, uh, in the original plan five years ago. Um, a- as you notice, there's multiple e- exits and entrances to this field. Uh, the way it was designed, uh, by the last professionals did not take into account, uh, that egress that requirement that ISD is requiring us to provide. Um, and it has to be remote. As, as you note, there, there is a, a, an exit. And let's see if I can do this again. There is an exit from the field at this location. If we lower the field five feet, we, we cannot go out this direction. We have to come out this direction and we would have to put in a sloped ramp, uh, and or, and or stairs, uh, at this location, which would reduce the east-west. Uh, um, but, but Mr. Chamber, Mr. Chambers, am I correct?
I thought that you told Commissioner Hughes that, that that covered entrance could be built as is. Uh, uh, even if the field were not elevated.
If my intent to, uh, maybe I misspoke, but it would be a separate structure from the field. Cause it would be too low.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Hughes, I, I spoke over you. My apologies.
No, it's fine, Commissioner. And I, I do still struggle with the exactly what you just were asking. And I will simply state that, um, an at-grade field, uh, that is not created into a jail cell, uh, is, will meet many of ISD's standards very quickly for, uh, egress and emergencies. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. I, I want at this point to move on to, um, the overall relationship of the proposal with the West Roslin, uh, area plan. Um, um, uh, Commissioner, let me start with specifically with questions, uh, because there's a, a note that I want to, to, to take. Um, but let's start with questions. Um, I, I just want to note, uh, I, I have circulated it, um, to us. Uh, uh, but I want to note for my colleagues that, um, we, we did receive a letter from, um, uh, uh, Steve Cole, a, a past chair of the planning commission, uh, and the chair of the West Roslin area plan process. Um, who, uh, um, and, and I, I have circulated that with the commission and with, with applicable staff. Um, uh, uh, urging, uh, urging the commission to not approve the use permit. Um, uh, I'll just refer colleagues to it, uh, but he raised a number of issues with the, with whether the structure is needed, the parking structure is needed with whether the athletic field should be elevated to a hundred and eighty feet. Um, uh, with balancing the benefits. And I, I just want to make sure that, um, that members of the commission are, are aware of that. Uh, Commissioner Hughes, I'll go to you. And then to Commissioner Gear.
Gary.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. One of the points, um, that was made was with regard to compliance with wraps and it's reference to improvements to street network to enhance circulation and mitigate impacts of new development. I just, I didn't understand how this proposal does that. So if someone could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Hi, Commissioner Garen. Can you, um, cite which page, uh, which element you're talking about?
Hi, Ms. Sontag. Um, no, I took these notes when I was going through this a couple of days ago. If you'd like, I can go back to it, but that was one of the, the pieces in it talked about the way that it would, um, comply with wraps. And so I just, I wasn't seeing that here because my understanding um, is that it's just adding this entrance on the side on Quinn, but eighteen still stays. It gets closed twice a day for student, um, pick up and drop off with the buses. So I just, I, you know, I'm not a transportation planner. I read this and thought, I think I'm missing something here. Oh, Mr. Gibson's here. Yes.
Um, yeah. Hi, everybody. Robert Gibson with, uh, Orleans County, uh, DES Transportation. So I, I think that when we, when we were citing that, we were looking at phase one and two, uh, in combination uh, as, as meeting those goals. So phase two does not per se meet that goal independently. Uh, but the overall, uh, campus design, the addition of, uh, the improved, uh, Eighteenth Street, um, particularly, and then the, uh, the pedestrian cut through along with, um, and I'm gonna include the, um, the pensance projects to the, to the east, all of those elements, um, uh, with the addition of the new pier street, all of those elements, um, together, uh, support that goal of the, the wraps plan.
Uh, okay. Thanks.
Mr. Mr. Gibson, if I may, so I, I'll, I'm gonna cite a couple of different parts to the wraps plan. Um, and then taken in juxtaposition, I think, raise a question. Um, uh, the transportation plan, map three point six on twenty, twenty-eight of the rap plan, um, notes the entirety of Eighteenth Street as a major pedestrian connection, right? Um, the, uh, uh, open space plan, as I've mentioned before, uh, talks about the importance of integrating, uh, um, the, the different parts of Roslin Highlands Park, uh, across Eighteenth Street. Um, and then, you know, under public realm and street state, streetscape and, uh, architecture under urban design, right? Um, uh, there are, there's, there's language about the location of parks, uh, and about the, um, experience of people on the street. Um, uh, uh, to be able to interact with, and I assume that things both visually and physically interact with, uh, the open space. Um, and, and like, given the interaction between at least these three elements, right? How is it not? How is it not the case that? I, I just, I, I guess I would ask you to say more, a little bit more about your thinking that it's, that it's not the case that 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 this sort of set of bowling pins that are these three, that are these different elements are completely knocked over by going from a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and eighty feet. And I, I guess, I guess my question is just please say a little bit more about your thinking with respect to that.
I, I, I think that my, my thinking is, is irrespective of the, the one seventy-five, one seventy-eight question, uh, to a large extent. Um, I, I think that you are, you're, you're, you're very fair to point out the, um, pedestrian feel and connection that is, is, uh, changed, uh, by raising the field. Um, that said, I don't know, at least, and I'm only gonna speak from the transportation perspective. Um, the, the core elements of the provision of sidewalks on both sides of the street network, um, our goal to continue to widen the street as was, uh, or, or widen the street compared to what was really a cart path previously, uh, to what you see in this diagram. Uh, when, when APS made the revisions to the plan, uh, many of the things were brought back into alignment from a transportation perspective. Um, from what you heard last month. Uh, so I, I will leave the one seventy-five, one eighty, uh, element on the table for, for discussion and uh, would be happy to answer further sort of core transportation connectivity, multi-modal questions that come up.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gibson. Entirely fair point, uh, to, to, um, I, and I appreciate, I, I appreciate your responses there. I'm gonna go. Um, uh, Commissioner Hughes, I'm going to defer to Commissioner. Tell me, uh, just as a matter of clock time and then come back to you.
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, Chair Weir. Um, my question is for staff, this is probably CPHD. Um, pretty much our sector plans, our comprehensive plan, um, something that I've known since joining the commission is that we more than actively discourage parking that is visible from at grade from the sidewalk. It has to be ideally below grade. In certain circumstances, we make the exception and allow it to be above once, at least one story up. Um, but never at grade. We've had a number of projects in Roslin where this came up and we've allowed them to be above grade, but that means at least one story up and screened. This is something that is to me unprecedented in my term, terms, um, planning commission for a project that allows something like this. How is this seen as being not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, with the Rosin sector plan, with wraps? That's my question.
Sorry, I was having trouble getting my camera on there. Um, so I'll start us off and then I'll let, um, probably let Aaron Schreiber jump in in just a minute. He has a little bit more longevity of experience with the, uh, Roslin area, but, um, APS, you know, continued to express, um, and, and underline the, the need for the field, uh, to be at a level of a hundred and eighty feet and for the garage to remain on site. So given those constraints, um, staff pursued, uh, different, you know, mitigation measures with APS, um, to improve the design experience, um, with the garage partially above grade. Um, Aaron, would you mind jumping in on, uh, past projects?
Sure. Um, so just for the record, um, good evening. I'm Aaron Schreiber with the, uh, planning division and, um, I, I do have um, some extensive background on the site. And I would say to, uh, Mr. Lam, tell me his question, and he is correct, that generally our, um, uh, adopted plans do discourage above-grade parking unless there are active building uses there. Um, the wraps plan itself also, um, uh, has that similar type of language. However, it also recognizes that there may be, uh, the need for, um, semi-exposed parking garages due to topographic constraints of certain sites, uh, this being one of them. Um, and so it does provide additional guidance, uh, in terms of how to try and activate any of those exposed portions of garages by having active walls, landscaping, things of that nature. And I think that's why, um, you know, uh, after hearing the insistence from APS in terms of, you know, some of the um, access and security issues, you know, we work with them to try and improve some of the facade features that you see here that weren't present in the proposal back in May. And that includes some of the, uh, different fencing, some of the facade, uh, treatments, the additional, um, plantings and, um, street, um, uh, streetscape with in order to help activate that space. But it does recognize that that could be there, but I do think that it, it is important to recognize there, there are the topographic changes here. Um, and, and so there is going to be the need at some point to get, uh, from this lower elevation along Eighteenth Street up to that level one. But, um, I, I do believe the plan contemplated that, or at least anticipated that that could be a possibility. Uh, and I would also say that back in twenty seventeen, when this went through the PFRC review and, and the use permit was ultimately approved by the board, there was a garage structure, albeit it was at a different elevation, but there all, was always going to be, um, some portion of an exposed garage. Um, uh, whether they've went forward with the phase two or not. And I think that's what we're looking at. It just seems to be at a different elevation than where it was, uh, in twenty seventeen. Um, so hopefully that provides a little bit of background, but generally, uh, we do try and avoid those. Uh, unfortunately, I think that a topographic change, um, it, it does necessitate, um, some portion of it being exposed.
I, I have a question. I'm gonna.
I pretty much felt that back in twenty seventeen, when this is being looked at, a little bit of the garage was exposed, but it was activated because you could see straight into the, the field. The most active thing that you have there, that's where the visual interest is. You have security, you have eyes on the sidewalk, you have, you could transsee both in and out. Um, so it was a very active sidewalk, even though there was a small amount of the garage that was contemplated to be exposed. This totally does away with that. There is no, you know, some flags up there are nice, but that's not activity. Uh, I have concerns about having the, the trees and the landscaping because landscaping is not APS' strong point, and it's not supposed to be. I mean, their, their money is mainly going to, to pedagogy and to running a school system. Um, I've seen any number of APS properties. I've seen any number of APS properties where landscaping is pretty much the last priority. And I'm not arguing with that priority, but the fact is, it's not kept up. So this is not, I don't feel this is in contemplation with the sector plan and with the RAPS plan. What was contemplated in 2017 did meet that. This does not. And I even thought with Roslyn often when the reason for allowing going above grade was mainly because of underground conditions, because the rock was there and it just didn't make any economic sense to be able to have to do blasting in order to go down further. So not to mention the metro tunnels. So I'm not convinced that this was what was contemplated as the sort of exception by RAPS. That's my editorial comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes, I'm going to go to you and I may, Mr. Gibson, I may have a follow-up question to your most recent answer, depending on what Commissioner Hughes asks.
Thanks, Commissioner Weir. And Commissioner, Mr. Schreiber, my recollection of 2017 and the RAPS process is much more aligned with what Jim just stated than the thing. So I do have two questions then based on it. The specific language in the RAPS that does preclude these sort of behaviors and conditions are on page thirty-three, which you allude to, Mr. Schreiber. And you are correct, it is about topography, which is the construction of the ground plane, not the building. So my question is fundamentally, from the corner of Eighteenth Street, mid, a point of the street to the end of the field, we'll say, at Eighteenth Street, how much of a topography drop do we have there? It seems pretty level from walking it.
So I, I believe it goes from about, it's about a two-foot drop.
Over two hundred, over two hundred feet, Mr. Gibson, plus, if I'm correct, over three hundred, almost three hundred?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, that you're right. Yes, it's, it's probably a one percent grade change.
Okay. And if mine goes down there, which is the reason we included this language in the RAPS for topography.
I, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but I do think you're, I would concur with your point that it is.
It's like a drop off like a hill.
It's, it's a story or so, or so.
Or plus, more like one and a half stories. It's a steep drop there on just one little building, which is the reason why Commissioner Cole and others were even worried, as Commissioner Lynn Tellme said, at the time, when we had a knee wall that we were upset about, that was being proposed in the original garage design, that was then chosen to be deferred because instead the county moved, instead of allowing the garage, it chose to add parking to the commercial buildings being constructed adjacent to the property and physically connected by the foundation. Just want to remind all my I'll look forward to your next question.
So thank you, Commissioner Hughes. My question is actually, I'm going to wait until the master transportation plan's part of our discussion, but I do have a factual question, I believe, for the applicant. What is, how far, at, at a field elevation of a hundred and eighty feet, how many feet below the Eighteenth Street sidewalk is the floor of the parking deck?
Chair Weir, could you, could you repeat that question?
So there's been, there, there's been a lot of conversation about how to interpret the many planning documents that we have that are implicated by the field elevation. And a lot of it turns around whether or not the use permit request before the commission looks more like below-grade parking or looks more like at-grade parking. I think this is partly what Commissioner Lynn Tellme was getting at, right? And so, you know, it has been discussed by, by you, the applicant, and by county staff as partially below grade. My question is, if the, you know, what is, what is the difference between the elevation of the Eighteenth Street sidewalk and the elevation of where the tires that are parked in the garage will touch the concrete? And I don't, I don't, I don't mean to sound cute or like a jerk. I'm just, I don't know the specific terms. So that's.
Sure. That, that clarification helps. So the site, the site is, is varies in elevation. So at the corner of Eighteenth Street and Quinn is a hundred and sixty-nine foot elevation. And Jeff, you.
Thank you, Ms. Sontek. This is great.
We, we actually illustrate this on our, on our slides, Jeff, on slides forty-eight and fifty-two. We have spot elevations all throughout the site that are a little bit bigger than these. But so that, at, at the corner of Eighteenth and North Quinn is a hundred and sixty-nine feet. The elevation of the garage is a hundred and sixty-five point six. So that's a few feet less.
Floor is four and a half feet below the ground. Is that what, is that?
It's, it's four and a half feet below the ground at that corner.
Okay.
So Eighteenth Street slopes up as you go east. So as you get to the other end of the garage, Eighteenth Street is approximately a hundred and seventy-two feet. So there's about a three-foot change across APS frontage from Quinn, and it goes up as you get to Roslyn Highlands Park.
And what is the height of the, of that deck from floor to ceiling?
We can, we can find that, but I, I also want to mention that at, at Quinn, sort of at the building, the corner of our building, that sidewalk is a hundred and seventy-four point three. So there's a, there's about a five and a half foot change from you, a slope from Eighteenth Street along Quinn to, by the time you get to our building.
That's helpful.
So just to clarify that, and Ben, please correct me if I'm wrong. I, I think that there's a four to seven foot delta between the sidewalk along Eighteenth and the typical elevation of the garage parking level.
Yes, that's, that sounds about right, Rob.
And the garage.
So if I were to, if I were to magically walk off the sidewalk into the garage, I would fall between four and seven feet, depending on where I am. If I were to be able to walk through the fence. Okay.
Yes.
And I cut you off, Mr. Gibson. My apologies.
I, I was just pointing out that the, a, a good thing to think of is the, the garage elevation is roughly the same as the, 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 the lower Schreiber level or the lower level of the school.
So we're talking about a little, talking about a little bit more than half of it above ground to a little bit more than half of it below ground over the course of the frontage. In general terms, I promise not to hold anyone to those, I promise not to hold anyone to that very unspecific description.
I, I think that's accurate over the course of Eighteenth Street frontage. Yes.
That's helpful to me. I, I needed to, to be able to think about that in those terms. Commissioner Sarley, I'm going to go to you.
Commissioner, can I, I'd like to add one thing. There was a discussion earlier about the, the above-grade parking or the, the at-grade parking issue within our comprehensive plans.
I, I think that it was with, Commissioner Lynn Tellme raised it within respect, with respect to RAP and the Roslyn Sector Plan. I was going to ask you about it with respect to the parking element, and that's the question that I said that I would come back to in a little bit. But if, if you want, I mean, if you want to answer it now, I'm, I'm happy to check a box.
I, I think that it's, it's a little bit tough to, to pigeonhole it into just the parking element of the plan. I, I would say that from a DES perspective, the, the idea of getting rid of surface parking is, has, has a lot of other things to it, not just how to, how to transition form from the streetscape to a building face and, and the urban elements of that. There's also the environmental impacts of it. Surface parking has, you know, pretty terrible environmental impacts. And in this case, I think one of the, one of the features of at least this combination of a partially above-grade, partially below-grade parking with the field above it is that you are, you're, you're doing double duty in, in a large respect from impervious area and, and, or, or semi-pervious area with these fields. And so there is, I, I would, I would suggest, and, and staff has looked at this as it's important to see this space as serving more than one use. You can, and I will leave it to the, to the, the planning commission and, and the members to, to weigh that in their thinking. But it, it is important to keep that in mind. From an environmental.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Gibson. I, I guess I, I, I have a, I have a response to that. I don't want to get into a, a back and forth. I, I very much do not want to get into a back and forth with you. I am happy to get into a back and forth with other commissioners about it. So I'll, I'll hold off on that point, but I, I very much appreciate that. And you've also checked a box off of when it comes to the, when we get to the master transportation part. Commissioner Sarley, I, you have been incredibly indulgent, so I'm going to go to you.
Thank you, Chair Weir. I just want to point out again quickly that the, the field itself has a significant slope, you know, even on the surface and, and, you know, think of Rockefeller Center and how that has a significant slope, but you don't really notice it as this field does. It goes from one eighty point three to one seventy-eight point five across the short side. So I, you know, you can easily imagine that, and that's just to drain, I imagine. You know, draining or sloping this field such that it follows the contours or, you know, is more conducive to the different grade changes is not, again, too far of a reach. The other comment, and this is a little bit of an editorial, I'm, I'm quoting Mr. Lynn Tellme here. On the renderings, when you put sort of public art or art, you know, there's sort of a two-sided, it's two sides of a coin there. One, you're attracting attention to the issue that you're trying to sort of not attract attention to. And then the other thing is, you know, that's really not relevant to the conversation a little bit here. So if, if it was an integral piece of art that was sort of articulating the edge of the slab in such a way that it made it really exciting and incorporated the urban design aspects that we're trying to deal with, I would commend that. But by slippily placing the sort of banners, you know, and, and again, it's a good idea, I'm not arguing the idea, but to, to sort of, and, and you're trying to deflect the problem, and, and I find that a little bit difficult to sort of, you know, talk about because the, the Band-Aid is not solving the problem. The fundamental problem is the urban design principle of no parking at grade. Doesn't matter how nice the banners are, the, the fundamental problem remains. So that's just my editorial and, and I'm trying to be as constructive as I can, but thank you.
And, and Commissioner Sarley, I think the urban design principle of how people interact with the things next to the sidewalk, right? Like it's, do we, do we build sidewalks that transition to walls, that transition to fields that are above anyone's heads, right? I mean, I think Commissioner Hughes was talking about how we, in 2017, there was objection to the concept of a knee wall, right? And now we've taken it, you know. I'm sorry, I, I, is there anything left on, I, I don't mean to, I thank you, Commissioner Sarley, for your, for your comment. Is there anything left on overall relationship with the West Roslyn Area Plan? I'm going to go then to the overall relationship to the Roslyn Sector Plan. And I, I just want to clarify the, the reason I bring this up. Because this is geographically not in the Roslyn Sector Plan. But the reason I include this is because the Roslyn Sector Plan is where we get the idea of the Eighteenth Street corridor and the Roslyn Sector Plan itself specifically defines the Eighteenth Street corridor as going from Quinn Street to the Presidio, right? And so I do believe that it is relevant to discuss the relationship to the Roslyn Sector Plan on those terms. So I, I, I welcome any comments or, or, or questions on that topic. And I'll, I'll just note that I, I'll, I'll just note that I, I have tremendous concerns that, that the Eighteenth Street corridor is, is something that can be accomplished out to Quinn Street under the, given the proposal, that it basically moves the, the, the western end of the Eighteenth Street corridor to to Oak at the, at the westernmost. Moving to relationship of the proposal to the master transportation plan. I, I had two specific areas around this. But I, I had a question, I still have one or two questions. Are there any other members of the commission who have questions about the relationship proposal to the master transportation plan? I, I guess I'll note, or maybe, Mr. Gibson, this is a question to you. You know, one of the, another aspect of the parking element is a preference against building excessive parking that is in the parking element. And I, I think that we are understanding, a commissioner's understanding is that, that it remains the case that the dedicated parking for the heights is not being utilized. And so I, I guess what quantification or, or metric is being used to to justify that we are not working against the parking element by allowing how is this not literally excessive parking? Given what we currently know about utilization. Ms. Sontek, I see you've got the slides up. I go to you or Mr. Gibson or the applicant, anyone who wants to field that one.
So let me start, and I may take it over to the applicant to provide additional guidance. Excessive parking, I think, is definitely one of those. Excessive is, is a metric term and it's, I, I'm going to leave it to the commission to, to set that bar. When staff looked at this, APS provided data that indicated that the parking demand for the programs at the Heights Buildings was, was probably upwards of about a hundred and thirty spaces. With, with the with the utilization of thirty spaces offsite that are not inside of the, the adjacent garage. That said, APS has definitely identified that there is capacity potentially in the adjacent garage to utilize. That would have to be acquired. And the, the, the big difference here is, I think, not just an excessive number, but staff has recognized two different MTP elements that in this case do have to be weighed in, in a conflicting manner and, and, and the commission has to resolve that and the board has to resolve that. There's the excessive parking question, which I think that with this garage and the hundred spaces that are utilized, they, they probably have you know, somewhere between twenty and thirty spaces of additional parking to support programs. And APS has not, has, has shown that as being additional visitor parking, additional support vehicle parking, additional ADA parking. The other issue really is about a, a quality of service issue for the ADA parking in this building and, and the, and the specific demands of the Schreiber program for, as a heavy ADA use. And I, I think that we've recognized that APA, APS has decided that providing a very high quality of parking access and service in this building is a priority for them. That is largely driving, driving the construction of this garage specifically. And we, we are, we are deferring to APS on, on that value stretch. And so I, the commission can, can discuss that and, and provide input to the board accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. A, a follow-up question, I guess, though, to staff, to the applicant. Mr. Chairman, I hope you can put me at ease with respect to something. Mr. Chambers, I hope you can put me at ease with respect to something. I heard you say student parking earlier in our conversation this evening. Are you in a position to to confirm one way or the other, whether or not anything in writing or policy exists as respects whether student parking is going to be allowed or disallowed at at this facility in the future? Or was I, or was that just a slip of the tongue?
I I don't recall saying that, but no, we are not providing student parking in in at this location. That was never intended and is not in our calculation and and what we believe we need in in as far as the spaces go.
I've made more slips of the tongue than one this evening, so I thank you for that clarification. Are there other questions from commissioners on master transportation related elements? Are there other questions from the commission on other items related to field height? I had noted potentially, including whether it the the field height effectively removes the field as a tool for realizing goals and rap. That's a concern that many commissioners have articulated. Does it create a facade that requires independent evaluation as a facade adjacent to Roslyn Highlands Park under the rap urban design element? And does the effect of the proposed field on relationship between the the that's the integrated recreation area? I already covered that. So Commissioner Sali.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Mr. Gibson mentioned that the the let me say, I wrote it down here, the APS garage parking on site is a value judgment. So I now want to ask APS, what is that value judgment? I think Mr. Gibson sort of left it open, and and I sort of wanted to hear that. And then part of that question is, what is the garage with the elevator right in front of the main entrance to the building? What is that? What's wrong with that setup? Like, what is it not addressing that this new garage would address? Just do a compare and contrast for me and explain to me why we simply must build this garage, even though we have excess capacity next door as the original design. Thanks.
Sure. With regard to to the parking, I mean, we appreciate that the the spaces in the Aubrey and and they are fully utilized. But the way it the operation of of that, these spaces are essentially for staff. We don't really have access for event parking and those kinds of things in in the Aubrey because it's all by passcode. Now, we do. We have 100 spaces and 10 of those spaces we are currently using as visitor spaces. So family and staff come in and they have to get a ticket, and there are some spaces that are designated for visitors, and they have to be validated, which we, you know, don't pay for because they're part of the 100 spaces that are being provided. So we do appreciate that. Right now, we are leasing 30 spaces offsite full time. And for itinerants, we we provide park a day parking. We do validations at a parking garage a block and about a block away, and that is what is currently utilized. We, the biggest issue that we have had and and we have been struggling with is is the accessible parking for parents picking up students and or taking students to appointments and whatnot. We also believe that the the coverage structure will allow ambulance access to pick up students, which is multiple times a week, that they would be covered rather than out in the street. And it's very difficult generally in that block to even get a parking space. And we added the handicapped parking spaces on Quinn Street to make that universally accessible. So we had a lot of people in our community that expressed, you know, frustration. They were willing to live with it because of the you know, accommodation that was made for the fire station in the area at that time. And and at this point, they they believe that they need that that's those spaces that were promised to them when the when the Shriver program was moved to this location. With this garage, we we basically are able to not manage or have to manage leased parking. We would not be leasing parking anymore. We would be utilizing it for itinerant staff and for the additional spaces that we do not have available. We would also provide visitor parking in there as well to to make the school function. It's a basically a an issue of function of how the how the school functions. And the other issue that we've had is with maintenance has no place generally to stop at this building. The loading dock doesn't, it's basically two cars wide. But we have trash pickup multiple times during the week. We have deliveries that are coming. So they really cannot get to the to service this building the way they should be servicing this building. So they would basically have access to park in this structure as well, so they could come in and spend the time. Currently, they send two two maintenance people to the facility and one drives around the block while the other runs in to to take care of whatever needs to be taken care of. And if they can find a space, they'll go in and help, but otherwise they're they're moving the vehicle to 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 keep the things moving. So it it's an operational issue, you know, and managing parking is not something that APS does. Leasing parking, working with Colonial Parking and and trying to make sure that we have those spaces that are available. It is a management issue that that we do have difficulty with. The other thing is, is we really can't give up the spaces when we don't have school because we are not going to be assured of getting them back, and we actually have had spaces reduced, and we've had to move move students, or move move parking spaces. So, I mean, we we've worked with it, we managed with it, but I think that we we quite honestly, APS doesn't want to build something we don't need. We believe that we need it, and the board believes that we need it, and that's why it's included in the project because you know, sure, could we could we build fewer? Yes, we could. But then you have the issue of building half of a field on 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 grade and half of a field on on structure. And quite honestly, the savings is not that significant because you still have to provide foundations and footings and you know, all of that kind of stuff. So it we did actually look at that study at one point in time. I believe it's actually in the presentation on one of the slides, the four options the board looked at before they directed us to go with this direction.
Follow up question, and this is again hypothetical, but we don't need quite as many parking spots as are being built, right? And I appreciate the, you know, grade versus built space. I understand that. So could you potentially accommodate, let's say, the ADA, the pickup and drop offs, the delivery, but omit the sort of staff parking? I'm assuming they're fairly happy with the current situation, and they're not particularly put off by having to ride the elevator and 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 get to the building that way. And then one of the concerns that I have, and I'm getting a little bit off topic here, Mr. Chair, I apologize, but this this building would have a really difficult time growing if we ever need to grow. And one of the possibilities is to have sort of pedagogical space under here, things like, you know, music studios or, I don't know, ceramic kilns or whatnot, right? Or even a secondary gym. And have we looked at that possibility instead of doing parking? And I'm sure you can get the gist of my conversation. I just hate parking. And then one of the things there was, it would be much more palatable to have the field at that height if there were windows into like, let's say, music studios along 18th Street versus, you know, this great looking into the back of parked cars and oil stains when the cars aren't there. So I'm putting this out there a little bit. You don't have to respond right now, but you know, I think it would be much more palatable if that space provided some of the things that we need to provide, including APS's need, but not the things that we don't need, which is excess parking, right? So I think, you know, the delivery, the covered ambulance access, all that, that is very legitimate. I don't argue with that. I I just have not seen a good reason for the extra parking spots for staff. You know, and and I don't understand why this would be significantly better. Like, okay, it's a few feet less to walk, but I don't, I even then, I'm not sure, you know. So I I'll just leave it at that, and and thank you very much for your response.
Yeah, I I I just want to say those that park at the Aubrey are are very appreciative of those spaces and and going up the elevator. Those that are are walking a a block, block and a half are not as happy, especially when they're bringing loads of stuff in for for school that day, whether it's groceries for a Spanish club or or whatever. Teachers are not like business, you know, office workers. They they bring a lot of stuff to school. They take a lot of stuff, and there's really no place for them to stop and and drop it off and or pick it up. So, yeah, some of our staff is extremely happy with with the Aubrey parking. The others are not so happy. As far as the the way this is being designed, we can't expand this school. There is no way we can can add to this. We can't put relocatables at this location, et cetera. And we are designing the garage structure itself that it could be future educational space if we did not need the 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 parking spaces. So we are doing it as a flat floor. It does have access to the building. And, you know, we do have that as a possibility down the road. It can be done. And we're designing it with that in mind. If we put only built half the garage and put it on dirt, we could never do that.
Right. I I appreciate your comment. I would just urge you to get down the road a little sooner rather than later, but thank you.
Commissioner Garen.
Thank you, Chair Weir. I I wanted to follow up a little bit on this discussion about the parking. Can we confirm, is this parking for staff currently free or subsidized by APS? That's my first question.
You're talking about the parking in the off in the off off locations.
That you just referred to, Mr. Chambers.
It's free to the, it's free to the faculty and staff. The APS pays for it.
Yes, great. I understand that. I am also a teacher, and I do understand sometimes there's a lot of heavy things that need to be carried. Can we, can you give me a sense on the cost analysis here between what we're paying for for leasing the space, validating the day parking versus the cost of creating these new spaces? And then what the source of the funds is for that?
The rent lease spaces come out of the operating funds. I I don't know that. We we haven't done a full comparison with regard to to the 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 cost benefit. It it is about 6,000 to 10,000 a month for the parking that we're paying. So that that's essentially what we're we're paying. The savings to
Tell me again, how many spaces that is for 10,000 a month?
It's 30 spaces plus all the validations. And we also do validations for for event parking.
Event parking mean like back to school night?
Yep.
Okay, that's different from most other schools. Okay, and then what's the my upgrade parking per space?
I, sorry, I couldn't. You you broke up.
Yeah, I asked this question at the meeting last last month as well. What is the cost per space of the proposed parking?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
You guys aren't interested in knowing that?
We we've never broken it out that way because it's it's a full structure.
What's the cost of the structure?
Oh, goodness. Ben, do you have that number off the top of your head? I don't have it in front of me.
And the source of the funds?
Jeff, to respond to your comment, I I do not have that that figure in front of me.
It's time, too. I asked for this at the last meeting. You guys don't, is no one concerned with the money other than the planning commission?
So are the the difficulty with, and we run into this with these types of questions, Ms. Garen, the the difficulty in comparing costs when we try to compare costs of of our projects versus other jurisdictions, projects and such is is just what to, how to how to how to break it down, because our our structure, our our structure includes the the field.
Mr. Bergen, let me finish. I'm not comparing it with other jurisdictions. I just want to know how much this costs and where the funds are coming from. I know that there's a lot of other demands for schools in the county, and I know that the public's willingness to support bond after bond is not infinite. I wanted to know what the cost was, so we'd have a sense of what the cost is versus what the cost is what we're paying for now with the parking. I'm troubled that you don't seem concerned about that. But one of the reasons I'm asking is I'm trying to find a solution here that will be palatable. At the last time we discussed this, it feels like there's two two issues here. One is providing more parking, and the other is this access for ambulances, children with disabilities, and that does seem like something we need to fix. But if we can parse that, we might be able to find some common ground and a way to move forward. Is there another way to do this? For example, could you use more spaces in the Aubrey or use some of those spaces for drop off or for your maintenance vehicles and then backfill those lost spaces with your validated parking, since that seems to be a variable? I'm trying to find a solution to move forward on this. I'm not not trying to be difficult, but I do feel like I asked you the same questions over and over.
So my my apologies, Commissioner Garen. I I did not intend my comments to be conveyed as as not caring about the cost. Of course, APS is concerned with our cost for managing it and for the 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 sizable investment that we're making to this property. The difficulty with with calculating cost per space is just because of the other elements of the project that are included with the field and and the streetscape improvements and and such. So certainly, we could go through a calculation and strip everything away and and kind of formulate a a response to that. The the other piece of your question is, where does the funding come from? So I just wanted to address that before, since you you raised it a couple of times. The this project is was first included in the CIP adopted by our board last year and was just reaffirmed in and the the board's motion to approve the 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 school's CIP on June 23rd. And so the the total project cost is is listed at $14.2 million. And there's several funding sources. Part of it's our reserve funds, part of it is capital bonds. And and some of it is is funded by by Arlington County itself. And that that information is all on the on the website, and, you know, it's it's represented there for for all to see kind of what, how much the project costs and where the where the sources are.
One reason I am asking some of this is, is there any middle ground between what you're proposing and something a lot less expensive, dramatic, seemingly not in line with the adopted plans? Or or is this it? There's, is there a new wiggle room here?
I I just, I what I put up on the on the screen was what the board had considered upfront, and we looked at an option B with nothing underneath the field. We looked at option C, which was half building, you know, the accessible spaces and some of those spaces. It was only a $2.7 million cost savings out of 14 million. We also looked at, as you had asked about, can we just make a covered walkway? We can. This this particular covered walkway that's shown in option D1 is is essentially covering the the steps and everything that is there, which, you know, we can do that as well. But it did not serve and solve the issues that we had. Option C and and option A, which we are pursuing solved the issues that that, you know, for the accessibility. And the board elected to go with the option A versus option C because it solved a lot more problems as well, and it provided future expansion space, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Can I do a quick follow up question? There was another. Thank you. There was another option or another comment while back, speaking of budget, that essentially was that going deeper so that the field was at the original design level of 175 was prohibitively costly. Where is that information? And and, you know, has that been considered or or brought up? Like, where's the information on that? So we can sort of compare a little bit, because it doesn't seem to be reflected on any of these options shown.
Yeah, I think that was part of the study that we had worked with our our design team that we're currently working with and and the options that we looked at and and how it functioned and what we were able to do. And Ben, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I, if I understand the question properly, you're there was some information we shared at our presentation when we came before the commission earlier this year that explained some of the impacts of of lowering the field, and one of them was the, you know, additional excavation and and such to to subsequently reduce the to subsequently reduce the the elevation of the garage itself. Was that the information that you were inquiring about?
Right, but I'm following up on Commissioner Garen's sort of line of inquiry. To to figure out that digging the extra five feet cost a delta that wasn't acceptable for the project, there there must be a spreadsheet somewhere that talks about budget and and why that option was eliminated. And so again, it's just, it's, it seems like you guys are fairly laissez faire about the number, you know, but at the end of the day, that's sort of a big deal and and I feel like we need a little bit more information so that we can and I reflect, you know, Commissioner Garen's comments, we're trying to work with you to see if we can find a solution, you know, that is more palatable.
So I I guess in in response to that, we did not do a full in-depth cost estimate of of what the impact would be for the additional excavation and such, because our our guiding principle is to have level access from the building to the field. And so it it made some of those other accessory considerations somewhat irrelevant from us because we were satisfying that that what we feel is a critical and essential element of the project.
Sorry, I'm utterly confused now, the whole reason the field, this is my understanding, the whole reason the field has moved to one eighty was because of the cost savings of the over dig. So now you're saying that the field is at this height, that's, I just had the narrative completely flipped.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry, I misunderstood, you you meant initially, well, like what was driving APS's consideration to to move it from one seventy five to one eighty in the first place?
Correct.
Not not what happens if it goes back to one seventy, so I'm sorry, I'm I misunderstood.
No.
So our, our, our our principal reason for changing the elevation of the field was, was to address access from the building to the field. And that it coincidentally had benefits of cost avoidances that were able to be realized. But that decision was not made purely on the basis of that cost avoidance. It was to meet a a design element that we feel is is essential for the project.
Okay, thank you, I'm I'm out of line, so thank you Commissioner.
Commissioner Hughes, I'm gonna go to you and I I think I want to give you the last question slash comment, because I think that we're probably ready to go to motions. If you agree.
Thank, I'll try, I will, and I I will, I will try to be brief Commissioner Weir. And and Mr. Chambers, Ms. Bur, Mr. Bergen, I know you guys, you know, you guys are probably sick of us at this point and I apologize. And I did see on seven, page seven of thirty one, the the CIP does have the the listing at fourteen point two four million for the project. And while we are all in agreement about the better access, you know, it is the parking that we are trying to tease out, which seems to be nearly impossible and, you know, the the one hundred twenty thousand a year for leased spaces, you know, is a hundred and eighteen years at at that price and, you know, of course, that's present value issues of money, so I won't go there. But Mr. Bergen, I want to follow up on some line of inquiry that that's been interesting and sort of not spoken about in any of your presentations, but almost as alluded to. You're stating, and I understand now, that the the leveling of the garage as a level floor and the height of its ceilings is currently being designed for, I'll call it conversion at a later date for more active and better uses as Mr. Eric, you know, Commissioner Sarley already identified what they could be. Is that true, am I hearing you correctly? That seems to be a driving narrative a little bit behind your choices and I'll be honest with you, Mr. Bergen or Mr. Chambers, in the past, my understanding, and I'm thinking of Wakefield as the most recent example, the planning around possible future extensions and plans that are laid out by one architect and engineering firm end up being rendered almost mute and useless by the next architect and rendering firm for doing such conversions. So my question is kind of specific, do you guys have a schematic, a buildable architectural schematic plan? And I understand it's not going to be a a full drawing sheet that's executable, but a ninety percent good drawing showing how a configuration of this garage could be as an educational space versus parking spots?
We haven't done, I mean, essentially, it it was not a driving force, it it was a driving force in in how we did it, because you could have had a sloped floor in there.
Yeah.
And we actually, in in one of the schemes, well, the scheme that was done as one of the studies for the the CIP, when we looked at it, lowering the floor of the the garage, we don't have enough room for the drive ramp to get into it. So we actually had a double level garage in there that you actually sloped down again. And it actually was below the existing footing, which would have added cost, but that's that's more detail than than we need to get into tonight. But when we were able to, when we looked at the the direction of providing universal accessibility to the field and providing universal accessibility to the Schreiber program, because the elevation of the garage floor at this point in time, we don't have any ramps and stairs to get to the Schreiber program from the pickup and drop off of those disabled students. The previous plan and lowering the floor, we have to provide ramps and stairs to get to the to the doorway. But the, you know, we talked about, you know, different configurations of 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 how we did that garage. We decided it would be a flat floor, it would provide us that future expansion space. It would also provide a space that could be used by the community for for events. You know, for flea markets or or markets or something could actually be covered and in that space, it would be a positive thing and and invigorate the community. So we felt that that was the the best option for how we did the did the garage structure. But it was, it was, it was a result of the the fact of the universe, universal accessibility and the change in philosophy on security of APS schools that that we're evolving into right now with security entrances and how do we secure our fields during the school day? Et cetera, which is our safety security group, S S R E M, is looking at those types of things and we're trying to incorporate that into the new projects that we do. But our philosophy on security and universal accessibility has has evolved greatly over the past five years.
Mr. Chambers, I appreciate it and and, you know, I I'm still prepared to make all my my major motions. But for my recommendation to APS staff is that I would encourage you that before you decide to finally build this, if you do build it, which I don't particularly think is a good idea, I would highly encourage you to pay the few extra hundred thousand dollars and go through the design process of putting in educational facilities if you do ever intend to convert the use. Because as you said, the site becomes locked and in twenty seventeen, I described the site as the future elementary school, given its size constraints and the demands within their community for student generation. And if this is a plan that APS is unwilling to share, that's fine. But you need to have that plan as an executable document to actually be able to move forward. And I understand building codes change and ISD can change and all of the such. But having at least a starting point would be something I would encourage you to do if you do proceed with this building, because too often, we've heard these things about different buildings, how they were designed, what we can do. And it ends up being somehow rendered mute by the next engineer and the next architect. And so while you have that in the concept, I encourage you to get the drawings if you do do that. Commissioner Weir, thank you for the time and Mr. Chambers, thank you again for the response and I I will move for ready for motions, Commissioner.
Yeah. Commissioner Hughes, if you I I believe that you have motions to 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 present, so why don't I give the floor back to you for that purpose?
Thank you Commissioner Weir, Ms. Badger, do you want to pull up? You said you'd do me the courtesy of of getting out the the motions that we prepared this evening up on the screen for us.
Yep, can you see them?
I can, to my fellow commissioners, I I circulated these during the beginning of our meeting based on 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 what we've some have previously spoken and with the discussion this evening, I see no reason to materially change these motions. So if there is anything that commissioners would like to editorialize, I'm more than willing to proceed, I have no pride of authorship, but Commissioner Weir, do you want to say something?
I, I do have something to say, I believe it will be in order to say it after you've made the motion, I don't know that it's going to warrant changing anything.
All right, then I'll go ahead and do the motion and I'll do what Ms. Badger's placed on the floor. I move that the planning commission find that one, the proposed use permit specifically, the proposed field at one hundred eighty feet elevation, the corresponding proposed parking garage, one fails to conform to the Western Roslin area plan, two fails to conform to the Roslin sector plan, and three is not in substantial accord with the Arlington County comprehensive plan.
Second.
Was that, who was the second on that?
Commissioner Patel.
Thank you Commissioner Patel. Does anyone have any discussion on this motion? Commissioner, will I tell me?
Yeah, I just want to make the point that even though I voted as transportation commissioner to have this go forward, I did at that meeting specifically state that I was reserving my my right to look at the design at this meeting. Those issues that were not transportation related and because of that, while I stand by my vote at TC, I will be supporting this motion because I feel that the overall designs that the motion before before us right now reflects my views as far as the design goes, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, will I tell me, I'm gonna, I don't see any other hands, I'm happy to call on people when if one goes up. I'm I'm gonna say a few things just with respect to this motion. I I am happy with it continuing to say, to refer to the Arlington County comprehensive plan. I I think that the letter that we draft is going to get into some of the specific elements of the comprehensive plan that we that that we covered, specifically the the GLUP and the master transportation plan. Just a few comments that I have about it, you know, I I I see a lot of issues with this plan. I, you know, I see it as undermining the street activation goals and the RAPS land use element. I see it as breaking the integration of open spaces and parks called for by the open space plan element. I see it as as having issues with above grade and at grade, above ground and at grade parking under the urban design element, also under the urban design element, avoiding blanket expansive walls. I I see it as undermining the Roslin sector plan's aspirations for an eighteenth street corridor going to Quinn. It takes one of the most important and lauded, one of the most important and lauded architectural accomplishments in the Commonwealth and the most expensive school in the Commonwealth and it hides it from view of anyone on that eighteenth street corridor. And that, again, is a corridor that expands to Quinn and that the RAP envisioned as a major pedestrian connection on this block. And 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 that eighteenth street corridor is also explicitly notated on the general land use plan. And so to that extent, it also undermines the general land use plan's aspirations for the same, you know. We've gone over the parking issues, it builds more parking where parking is already underutilized, even though a number of the stated needs for additional parking are met by construction, constructing the covered sidewalk. It creates examples of 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 comprehensive plan, area plan and sector plan guidance, deferring to applicants preferred solution, even where the applicant acknowledges that other solutions were feasible. And from my perspective, all of these changes are adopted plans, all of these are changes from adopted plans and and policy to accommodate a preferred approach, a preferred approach to an admittedly laudable goal, but a preferred approach. And and our job isn't to defer, I don't think, to the applicant's preference, no matter how laudable. Our job is to ask whether the preferred and proposed solution is an acceptable departure from multiple planning documents and in my estimation it isn't. And that that's going to be my remarks for all of the motions. Thank you for colleagues for indulging in in those comments. Are there any other comments on on this motion? All right, I'm gonna go, seeing no hands, I'm going to go through the roll. Commissioner Bagley is absent, Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner, will I tell me?
Aye.
Aye.
Or Peterson is absent, Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Roll is absent, Commissioner Steinberger is absent, I vote aye. Motion carries six to zero, Commissioner Hughes, do you have another motion?
I do, Ms. Badger, can you pull up the next one, please, thank you. And for my colleagues' sake, I'm gonna do the editing on the screen. Ms. Badger, if you don't mind, right between for a below grade, I'm gonna put for a partially below grade parking structure. I think we've already identified in our conversation that it is both below, at, semi-at, and in many ways varies depending on exactly where it is. So I think that'll add the clarity necessary. All right.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes, thank you Commissioner Weir, yes Commissioner, before I move?
I was, I was extending a hand to you.
Okay, all right, I move that the planning commission recommends that the county board deny the use permit amendment for a partially below grade parking structure with a lighted synthetic turf field above, with modifications to the Arlington County zoning ordinance requirements for a parking reduction and to allow parking spaces to be located offsite, subject to the conditions of the staff report.
Is there a second?
A second.
Will I tell me, does anyone wish to speak to this motion?
I'll speak to my, the motion, Commissioner Weir, I I think it's self evident from our discussion this evening. And as we did in our first voting, when we recommended a deferral, we went through many alternatives. We've heard this evening how limitedly explored and sort of marginally improved, I'll use the terms, the the entire project has become. And I think that the subject of our discussion earlier is quite clear with respect to our reasoning.
If no one else wishes to, thank you Commissioner Hughes, if no one else wishes to be recognized, then I will call the roll, Commissioner Garen. Commissioner Garen, you may be on mute, I'll come back to you, Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Garen, aye, correct? Did I just hear that?
Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner, will I tell me?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson is absent, Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll is absent, Commissioner Steinberger? Is also absent and I vote aye. Motion carries six to zero. Commissioner Hughes, I believe you have another motion?
I do, Ms. Badger, thank you ma'am. I move that the planning commission recommends that the county board direct county staff to work with the applicant on a use permit application for covered entryway on the eighteenth street south that conforms to the Western Roslin area plan, Roslin sector plan and the Arlington County comprehensive plan.
Second.
I've got Commissioner Garen. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion?
Commissioner, we are only to say I believe that the substance of our previous conversation fully explains the rationale behind the motion.
Thank you Commissioner Hughes, I'll go down the roll, Commissioner Bagley is absent, Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner, will I tell me?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson? Is absent, Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll and Commissioner Steinberger are absent, I vote aye, motion carries six to zero. Commissioner Hughes, I believe you have a fourth motion.
Do you have a final motion, although I am very happy and I want to commend staff, both from APS and from our own staff for the tremendous job I know that you guys are doing and working tirelessly and these, this motion is is meant to further amplify what we as a commission, I think, have begun to embrace, which is a far more expansive role as the community engagement of our planning process. So therefore, I move that the planning commission recommend the county board direct county staff to ensure that any conditions for future constructions at or around the height school include coordination with the neighbors.
Second.
That's Commissioner Patel from the second. Commissioner Hughes, opportunity to speak to your motion.
Thank you, for for those of you, we heard this evening, of course, from some of the neighbors or some representatives of of some of the building owners of the neighbors. And again, it's just to reiterate, as Commissioner Weir said, it is exceptionally unusual for us to not hear from, for example, Ray Farm or any of the Roslin area engagement civic associations on such a significant deviation from the original RAPS planning process that they had spent years doing. And therefore, we ourselves as a commission did not have a PFRC on this action and was brought to us in rather haste in the spring and continues to be brought forward. And this is yet another reiteration of what I feel is our continued need as a community to ensure that when we say something that we mean it and also that we to ensure that when we say something that we mean it, and also that we explain more than we should to our neighbors what is going on. That, I hope I can get your support. Thank you all.
Commissioner Hughes, does anyone else wish to be recognized to speak to their vote on this motion? I'll call the roll. Commissioner Bagley is absent, Commissioner Gieran.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner, will I tell me?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson is absent, Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
Commissioners Schroll and Steinberger are absent, I vote aye. Motion carries six to zero. Are there any other motions or to any other commissioners which should be recognized relating to this agenda item? With that, this agenda is disposed of to county staff, to Ms. Sontag and Mr. Gibson and your colleagues. Thank you very much. We understand that this was an extremely difficult and, and challenging and unprecedented proposal. It is not lost on us that, that this came to us without a recommendation at the last time. And it is not lost on us that that reflects in the extent to which this is a difficult and challenging piece. We are extremely grateful for your thoughtful time to the applicant. I, I, I am extreme, I, we are also grateful for the work that you have done. This is, as you have made very clear, a very challenging situation. The goals are, are laudable for universal design. As far as the substance, you know, I, I believe that the conversation speaks to itself, but I, I do want to thank you for, for being here. I know that this is not, I know that this wasn't an easy meeting for, for you, and, and, and thank you again for, for participating in the process so far. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Yes, our next item tonight is an informational item on the administrative update provided by our Matt Pfeifer from the current planning team.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. And Ms., Ms. Badger.
Thank you, Courtney, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will go ahead and share my screen. I do have a very brief few slides to kind of introduce this topic and the reason for bringing it forward to you this evening. Okay. All right, can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So this, this is a quick few words about updates to administrative regulations. And when I say administrative regulations, I am including any of the administrative regulations that the Planning Division kind of has the purview over, that includes the 4.1 Administrative Regulation that governs the submission of site plans as well as the site plan conditions, which are actually part of that administrative regulation document, and there are a few more as well. But those are the two main ones that we'll discuss this evening. So the purpose of this conversation, back in March of this year, we did conduct an SPRC meeting to discuss the annual update of the site plan conditions. And following that meeting, there were several questions from various commissioners about, you know, the process involved in updating those site plan conditions, kind of what site plan conditions do, and various questions to that effect. And we also wanted to, you know, address that as well as talk a little bit about the process moving forward for the update to the larger Administrative Regulation 4.1. So, you know, again, the, the purpose of this is just to, to review what our standard practice is for the process for those updates. And while we're at it, we thought it would also be a good idea to just say a few brief words about some of the topics that we're going to be looking at in updating the 4.1 regulation itself. So just getting into it, the standard site plan conditions update. This, this was a slide that we used in March when we brought this forward to the SPRC. But what this flow chart shows is kind of the way we approached that update. So the, the first part of this was to identify issues, ideas and technical changes that needed to occur to the standard site plan conditions. To do that, we worked with an interdepartmental group of staff. We also reached out to NAOP and a working group of their choosing, just given that they are kind of our main stakeholders and, and main customers, almost, I would say, as, as they represent the developers who are, you know, going to be bound by these conditions in the future. After that process, we worked to develop a first draft, and we, we went through and reviewed that internally. After that, we reviewed that sort of with more external stakeholders, the NAOP working group, the county attorney's office, not technically external, but external to the Planning Division, I would say. And then we also brought that forward to the SPRC to, you know, inform them of the changes that were being contemplated. After that, you know, we finalized the update with the county manager's office. So this was the, the process that we went through. I will say that, you know, I think that, you know, several questions were raised by commissioners after that, and that the main topic of this was why wasn't this brought forward to SPRC at the beginning so that, you know, issues for staff to study could have been provided at that time, and then we could have come back at a later date, you know, having studied those issues, kind of at, you know. Issues being brought up at step one, which, you know, could have come back to a second SPRC at step three. So that, so moving forward to 2023, that's kind of exactly what we're proposing now. I think it, it does make sense at this time to include the SPRC, you know, in our initial kind of fact finding step where, you know, we're going out to interdepartmental staff to see, you know, what are some of the technical changes that may need to be updated? We're going out to NAOP to say, you know, how are these conditions working in terms of administration? And then we, we think it's also, you know, a, a, a good idea to then go to the SPRC and say, you know, these are the changes that we're going to be studying. Are there any others that should be included for us to study in this update? So we heard John that, and, and I think we're going to go ahead and, and work that into our, our standard process moving forward. So on to the 4.1 update itself. You know, we, we're going to be getting started with that in earnest this summer. We, we've already started, you know, I have already started marking up that document, and we're gonna get started, you know, coming up with the draft this summer. Here is what I'm looking at. We're looking at, you know, the main thing here is that, you know, our current iteration of the 4.1 Administrative Regulation includes, you know, requirements for submission of physical copies of site plan drawings, which obviously is now out of date, given that we have the permit Arlington system now live for three years. So that needs to occur, you know, ASAP. We're also looking at, you know, are there, kind of similar to the site plan conditions, you know, are there any technical requirements to site plan and Crystal City Block Plan Submission Drawings that need to be updated? Have things progressed? Or are there any issues, you know, that, that we have identified that just need to be changed in that regard in terms of the, the drawings themselves and what needs to be shown on those drawings? I can think of one right off the top of my head, which is that, you know, we, we never get drawings submitted by applicants that show by right setback standards on, on our plot and location plan. So that, that's something that needs to be updated, and that's something that's really important from a zoning perspective when they receive building permit drawings on the back end of things. We are also looking, you know, as a result of the work we've done on the Biophilic Cities Initiative, we're also looking to, you know, include as a standard submission for every site plan, regardless of whether or not they're going to be participated in the green building incentive program or not, that every site plan include a biophilia narrative that, you know, discusses the project's biophilic components. And this is something that, you know, as has been talked about repeatedly, could be discussed during the site plan review process. We are looking to, you know, supplement and enhance the sustainable design elements, submission requirements to conform to what was approved with the 2020 Green Building Incentive Program update. We are also looking to include a requirement for a meeting with green building staff prior to, you know, submission of, of a site plan application as this is a component of site plan applications that, you know, there's always a lot of back and forth on. So we think that it, it is warranted, warranting of a meeting beforehand to make sure that applicants are informed of exactly what they need to submit in that regard. We're looking to update TDM and TIA, now MMTA submission standards as these have changed. And then, you know, really any other updates that, that may occur throughout this, this review process. So as you'll notice from this list, these are all very, very technical, you know, updates. These are all, these are all with respect to how site plan applications are constituted and governed and processed. So we, we're not, we're not contemplating any check-in with the SPRC or Planning Commission at this time. Again, this is a very technical document. It really, we're, this is downstream of policymaking. This is, this is simply talking about, you know, how applications are filed and processed. However, you know, I, I will say that, you know, these are the types of things that we always keep the SPRC chair informed of. And, you know, we, we're, we can commit to, to working with them at this stage. So that's all I have at this time, and I'd be happy to address any questions that the commission might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. I, I don't have any questions, colleagues. Commissioner Gieran.
Thank you so much, Chair Weir, and thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. I know this is a ton of work. My only question is, we sometimes get questions from other commissions about this process. And as you point out, it is pretty complicated. As you know, I have said, I don't know, I need to ask Matt Pfeifer. So is there a way that you will like put up an FAQs on the webpage? Or will you be doing briefings to staff who will then take it to the other commissions? So they understand this as well. I don't want us to try to be the middlemen and get something wrong here.
Sure, yeah. I mean, we, we can definitely look into that, I think. You know, I can think of the top of my head, you know, couple of landing spots for, for how we could go about doing this. I, I think it's a good idea to kind of have a, a home for, you know, the, the 4.1 Administrative Regulation as well as the site plan conditions and any updates there too.
Great.
And certainly, you know, this is, this is not only a Planning Division effort, it's an interdepartmental effort. So, you know, inner, key interdepartmental staff will be, you know, apprised of these updates as they go along.
Yeah, I guess some, this, this, this is one clear example of it. But, you know, sometimes we get asked things that are really best answered by staff. So I appreciate you being so open to this idea of, yeah, maybe putting something out there. And then we can refer folks to the page or to the right person. Make sure that everybody has accurate, complete information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gieran. Anyone else with questions? Mr. Pfeifer, I'm very grateful that you took the time to put this presentation together. It's extremely informative. I know we've been talking about doing this for several months now, and I'm grateful that we have now had an opportunity to, to get this briefing. So thank you again. Ms. Badger, are there? Courtney, welcome. Thank you again. Ms. Badger, are there other items on our agenda this evening?
The final item on the agenda is the PC Committee Reports.
Before, thank you, Ms. Badger, before we do committee reports, I believe that we also usually have a staff report item on our agenda, and, and it may be that between this, that, and the other thing, we've already covered it. But I, I do want to ask you and Mr. Pfeifer and others whether or not there are any other staff items that, that need to be reported on before we go to the committee reports.
I apologize, that is an agenda item that I overlooked. I apologize about that. I'm not aware of any staff reports, but Matt Pfeifer can chime in if he has anything.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. We don't have any report at this time.
So Ms. Badger, you didn't overlook it. We, it's, it's dealt with. So for committee reports, we, we are down a handful of, of committee chairs this evening. I know that, for example, Commissioner Peterson circulated a, a report, so I, I will note that hers is as submitted. The only thing that I would have covered in my chair's report, we've already addressed, which is the status of the bylaws changes and non-changes and, and policies. There probably will be bylaws changes for the, the committee, for, for the, the hybrid participation aspect for committee meetings. Commissioner, will I tell me, do you have anything on LRPC?
Actually, no, we have nothing coming up in July. We were originally going to have a joint Zoko LRPC meeting at the end of the month for Missing Middle, but that is being put off until after the August break. And that's, that's LRPC?
I, I'm glad that you're joined by your co-chair as well this evening. Commissioner Patel and Sarley, anything for zoning committee?
Ms. Patel, I'll go first, or I'll comment first, and then you can follow up. So we do have a scheduled Zoko meeting coming up next week on Tuesday. I believe that is July 12. In that meeting, we will be covering TDR for the Haven Site, and that has some Form-based code Columbia Pike conversation issues. So I would encourage any and all of us to attend. And then we did have, we do have, I should say, the Missing Middle Study to come to Zoko. And that is sort of not yet scheduled. So we're probably thinking September at the earliest, if not later. So that's the update. Ms. Patel, did I forget anything?
No, thank you, Commissioner Sarley. I think you got everything.
Commissioner Sarley, that, that, that would have been the same meeting that Commissioner Laitelme just referred to as the, as the joint meeting, right? It's, it's with, for the Missing Middle that would be in September?
Yeah, so we don't have a date for that yet, correct?
Got it, got it. Wanted to know whether or not it was one or two meetings that we don't have a date for.
Oh, you know what? And I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Weir, I think one of the things to add is that next Tuesday, the county board, what, what Mr. Rogers was saying is that the county board is gonna address some of these issues around Missing Middle, which is why the July 25 meeting is being moved. So anybody who's interested on the commission, tune into the county board's discussions on next Tuesday.
That's the work session.
That's to be the working session, right?
That's right.
Exactly.
Which will also be, and that'll be in the afternoon, and we still have a July 12 zoning committee meeting on the Haven. Is that, that's what you said earlier, right, Commissioner Sarley?
That's correct.
Thank you. Just making some notes. So next up is PFRC, we do not have our chair. I don't know, Commissioner, let, tell me if you have any additional intel that you would want to share. But I believe that we are at no report for PFRC this month, which is fine.
Right, I have nothing to add.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Hughes, anything on the area on the AUG?
No, and the Zoko meeting, which has a significant AUG interest in this, had the three previous meetings prior to this. Don't think of it so much as, as the Haven Site. Think of it as TDRs within the, the neighborhood's plan. It's very important to sort of understand it has a broader context outside of a single site. And so that, and then in the fall, we have a lot of use permits coming. So you guys can expect to see more Form-Based Code in the coming months.
Let me jump in there on Commissioner Hughes, is that the, the Haven Site? That's also the TDRs for the Boston Macy's site?
It is, that is correct. The, the implications are, as you, as you allude to, which initially told me it has broader impacts, will be. which is, let me tell me, it has broader impacts well beyond just the Columbia Pike zoning along the TR transfer rights allowability for the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code. The particular application that is most pertinent is, as as was said, the Haven Site, which, should it go forward, is one of the community benefits being put up by the Macy's site owner, who happens to be both the owner of the Haven Site and the owner of the Macy's property.
Thank you.
So thank you, Christian Hughes and Commissioner Lettelli. I believe, Commissioner, Madam Clerk, I believe that that is our last agenda item. Is that correct?
That is correct, last agenda item.
Thank you. So thank you to staff, to the applicants, members of the public for your time, consideration and patience this evening. The items heard this evening are expected to go to the County Board on July 16 and 19. This month, it will be my turn to represent the commission at the board meeting. Many staff labored to make this virtual meeting run smoothly. Thank you to all of you. Thanks especially to Courtney Badger, Joanne Harrison, to SPRC Supervisor Matt Pfeifer, David Wood, and others who I may have failed to name. That being said, the commission is adjourned. Have a good night.